Hey, it's Monday, August 4th. It is now 6:00 to 2:00 PM. And I called to order the board of selectmen meeting. To kick off the meeting, we will be in a joint session with the planning board.
Good afternoon. Chad Gavala, Chairman of the Planning Board. We do not have a quorum, but myself and Dave Croft is present for this meeting.
And it's just for awareness, this video is being, this meeting is being recorded. It will be available on the town's YouTube page. All right, to start off our, while the planning board does not have a quorum, we'll be there as, to advise us as needed moving forward, as the chair is present, and we'll just take it from there. All right, agenda number one, presentation from CHAPA, which stands for Citizens Housing and Planning Association, on the MBTA Community Zoning Law.
Okay, well, thank you all so much for having me. Really appreciate it. I have some slides prepared. I don't know if we can get them on the screen.
If you could serve his name and who you're from.
Of course, yeah, sure. I'm Will Rattigan. I'm from the Citizens Housing and Planning Association. We're a statewide housing nonprofit that works to make housing more affordable in Massachusetts. And my role, because this law has been affecting so many towns in Massachusetts, has been to educate towns around the Commonwealth for the last year or so about what the law means, how it affects towns, and how towns can work on achieving compliance. So I was expecting some members of the public as well, so I kind of have some background on the law and what it means. Since you're all on the Select Board and Planning Board already, you may know most of what that is, so I can move quickly through that and then just get to how you all can think about moving forward. And if at any point you feel like, since it's a small group, what I'm covering is nothing new to you, go ahead and tell me, I can do more.
Absolutely.
I have a microphone posted to you, so.
Oh, sure, sure. So am I on Zoom right now?
Yeah, yeah, either or. Grab one or the other, move yourself. I believe it's on already.
We are not on Zoom.
We're not, okay, so.
It's just being recorded.
Got it, okay. But the mic is for recording.
Yes.
Correct, please. Great.
Thank you.
Okay, so I should have a presentation up there. See if we can get it up. All right, so we can, next slide, you know what we're talking about now. And I told you from the Citizens Housing and Planning Association, and I'll just say upfront, we're a nonprofit that works to make housing more affordable. We think this law does that. That said, I'm not here to tell you what to do, what you should think about the law. I'm just here to tell you how it works and what it means, and it's ultimately up to you to decide how you want to move forward. So if we can move on, I'll start with some quick background. So what is the law? Where did it come from? It was part of an economic development bill passed by the Democratic Legislature in 2020, signed by Republican Governor Charlie Baker. So very bipartisan law when it was initially passed, part of an economic development bill. We'll get into why later. And what it does very simply is it requires 177 communities, so almost half of the state, the entire MBTA service district, to designate at least one area where property owners can have the option to build multifamily housing if they choose to do so. It allows community where to put that district, so there's a great deal of flexibility and work, of course, for the planning board. And the real goal is just cut regulations, cut red tape to make it easier to build housing in more parts of Massachusetts, because it's historically been pretty difficult. So moving forward, so just quick background on why it was passed. It's a story of housing affordability and trying to make the price of housing more affordable. And I always like to bring in some local data to illustrate this point, just to show people how it hits home locally. So I'll usually compare some local middle-class job to what housing prices are like in the area. Freetown, easiest one to find was a starting salary for a teacher in the school district. It's about $48,000. At CHAPA, we'd say housing is affordable if you're spending no more than 30% of your pre-tax income on it. So if you're making $48,000 a year, that's about $1,200 a month. Average monthly rent on a one-bedroom apartment in Massachusetts is about $2,400, which sounds crazy, I know. And then if you are buying the average Freetown home for $650,000, you can afford to pay, or rather, the monthly payment for that is about $4,000. So that's, that's the issue we're trying to solve here. It's an issue of salaries people making are not enough to afford the kind of housing that's available. And so it's a law intended to introduce housing that is more affordable for people who are making middle-class salaries, like those of teachers. So a little more background on the next slide. The reason this was part of an economic development package is that it's intended to help a major economic problem for the state, which is that high housing costs have been driving out working-age people. So while Massachusetts has had a relatively steady, slowly growing population over the last few decades, what we've seen in the last decade or so is that we've had this really rapid trend of people from about 25 to 44 leaving the state. Other groups, not so much, 65-plus, 45 to 65, pretty steady. We're getting more college students every year because of all our universities. But when it comes time for people to buy a home, launch their career, maybe start a family, they're leaving Massachusetts for states like Florida, Texas, Ohio, where housing prices are more affordable. And as an economic development issue, that's problematic. We invest a whole lot of money in education, our public school systems, universities in Massachusetts, and when people get all that education, they're leaving and taking their talents and contributing to other economies, which isn't a great deal economically. So that's, that's how Governor Baker wrapped this into an economic development issue, and that's why we're thinking about both, like, let's make it more affordable for our residents, but also, why is housing important for allowing the economy to continue to grow? Okay, that's enough, enough on background. I can move forward from there. So we know housing is expensive. If you tried to buy or rent a home recently, you know that, but why did we get here? Capitalist economy, like anything else, the price of housing is set by supply and demand, and the supply of housing right now is less than demand. As you can see on the graph here, this is a chart of housing production in Massachusetts over the last few decades. We built a lot in the 60s, 70s, and 80s, and then that really fell off a cliff in the 90s, 2000s, and 2010s. And what really changed is, you can see in dark blue, that's the production of multifamily housing, so anything other than a single-family home. We used to build almost as much of that as we built single-family housing in the 90s. That totally fell off a cliff, and although it's recovered a bit, we still aren't building that much of it. So why is housing expensive? We don't have enough housing. We're not building it quickly enough to keep up with the number of households we have in this state, and especially the many people with high incomes coming for our pharmaceutical and high-tech industries, coming here with a lot of money. They're competing in a really competitive marketplace and driving up housing costs for everyone. So moving forward, this is kind of for the general public, you all probably know this, but how do we make homes more affordable? There's a lot of things we can do. It's obviously not a one-size-fits-all solution, but one simple thing we can do with supply and demand is build more homes. I like to illustrate this in a little more detail, because sometimes people see new homes come on the marketplace, and they're really expensive, and they don't see how that could possibly help bring down the costs of housing for them. So I like to make an analogy with another product people can relate to more often, which is used cars. We all saw in 2020 what happened when, because of the COVID-19 pandemic, car production ceased. The price of used cars absolutely skyrocketed. If you tried to buy a vehicle in that time, you might know that. And there's a graph of the used car vehicles. You can see that in 2020, it's pretty steady, and then we stopped building new cars. Cost of used cars went way up. That's the same situation when we're with housing right now, except that instead of a brief delay on housing supply, we've had decades where we haven't built enough housing. And so that's driving the costs of what we'll call used housing, old homes that should be cheaper, way up, as people who have high incomes are getting in bidding wars for older homes that should be cheaper. So that's why, even though new homes might be more expensive than we hope, or than many people can afford, they do help to bring the cost of housing down, or at least stabilize the cost of older homes for, for everyone else. All right, we can move on. So how can zoning affect home production? As I said, the MBTA Communities Act asks towns to make a reform to their zoning. And the way changing zoning affects housing production is by changing the rules to make it easier to build housing. Zoning is the set of rules for how property owners can use their land. It says what the height of buildings can be. It says whether it can be used for industrial, residential, commercial uses, distance between buildings, et cetera. And right now, Massachusetts has such restrictive zoning codes, really some of the most restrictive in the country, that you're only allowed to build buildings with more than four units per, per building in 4% of the Commonwealth. So very few opportunities to build multifamily housing, and that pushes up people that can't afford single-family homes. And it also pushes up people that may not want to live in a large, single-family home, so younger people, small, young couples, single people, divorced parents. Big issue is older people trying to downsize out of their larger, single-family homes, can't find a place to do so. And right now, we don't have zoning that allows that kind of housing, those people need to be built. So zoning reform to allow that kind of housing is not an end-all-be-all, but it's a first step, because if it's not legal to build that kind of housing, we're definitely not going to see any of it built. So the goal is to at least make it legal to do so. Moving forward, so how does the MBTA Communities Act reform zoning? The town, as you probably know, has to choose a few areas where property owners can have the right to build multifamily housing, at up to 15 units per acre. Really key thing to emphasize, and definitely to emphasize your constituents, is that giving property owners the option to build 15 units per acre does not mean anyone needs to change anything. If you own property in one of these districts, you're simply getting another option for how you can use your land. You don't have to do anything. If your land was a single-family home, you can keep it that way. If it was a bank or a store, same thing. You merely have another option for how to use the land that you own. Okay, so 15 units per acre. Why are we focused on that number? Why is the state forcing towns to allow that in certain areas? The answer is, that's kind of the magic number that most, what we call missing-middle housing is. And missing-middle housing just means everything between single-family homes, which we have a lot of, and larger apartment buildings that we have in our urban centers. So duplexes, fourplexes, cottage courts, townhomes, small apartment buildings, those can all come to around 15 units per acre, and the goal is to legalize those in more places. So let's look at some local examples I have in the next slide. I always like to show people what this looks like locally. Not a lot of it in Freetown right now, but just in some neighboring communities, there's a whole lot of properties that are around 15 units per acre. So if you have a smaller lot, like a .1 or acre lot, that could be a two-family, it could be a three-family on a slightly larger lot. These are two examples in Dayton and Kushner. And then if you have a larger lot, like this almost two-acre property in Lakeville, you could have a larger 28-unit project. But again, what I'm trying to emphasize here is that, like, we're not talking about skyscrapers, we're not talking about really big apartment buildings. These can be two, three stories. They can be, they can fit in with the existing architectural context of a community and not be something that feels super out of place, and many times exists nearby already. It's not brand-new. All right, the next one, just a bit more about missing middle. Who is this trying to serve? Why is the state zooming in on this? Which called missing middle, both because we don't have a lot of it, we don't have a lot of townhomes, et cetera, and also because it's middle and that it's like intended to meet the needs of people in the middle class. Right now, if you're looking for a home in Massachusetts, you generally have two realistic options. One is that you have a lot of money. $161,000 or more means you can buy a $650,000 home. In Freetown, great, you can buy a single-family home. But on the other side of the scale, if you don't have a lot of money, what's generally available to you is to live in some kind of subsidized housing, but to qualify for that, you need to have an income below a certain level. Usually, the absolute ceiling is 80% of the area median income. In Freetown, that comes out to about $67,000. So if you make less than that, you can get some kind of subsidized housing, after a long waitlist usually. But if you're anywhere between $67,000 and $161,000, you're kind of out of luck, and that's why a lot of people that are younger are leaving the state when it comes time to, to find their own home. The hope is that by allowing smaller, more compact, multifamily homes, we'll be able to create more affordable homes that are market rate, not subsidized anyway, that we'll be able to meet the needs of middle-class people. Moving on, okay, so an overview of what missing-middle housing is, cover that. Just want to cover like two common concerns. I think the first one people always worry about with any kind of new law is how it would affect municipal finances. People care about their wallets first. Makes sense, me too. So at this point, because you all are at the later end of the process, we don't really need to guess anymore. Four communities have paid a lot of money to commission economic consultants to conduct economic impact analyses of their MBTA community districts, assuming that every landowner who has the option to build would build, which is not quite realistic, but it's kind of showing you what the maximum scenario would look like. And those towns, Manfield, Medfield, Milton, West Newbury, all found that this would have an economically positive impact. Pretty big question, there's a lot more we can talk about it. But the, the basic analysis is that the taxes new residents would pay in terms of property taxes and vehicle excise taxes would exceed costs the towns believe they would incur in providing services to them. One of the reasons this math comes out this way is that generally the cost of providing services to multifamily housing is less than providing it to the residents of single-family housing, because services can be delivered to the same place for more people. And significantly, residents of multifamily homes are less likely to have school-aged children, which is an expense as well. But for more about this, I'm happy to talk about it afterwards. There's some really great research by the Massachusetts Taxpayer Foundation that I encourage every planning and select board to watch, so I'm happy to share that with you afterwards. One more common concern we can get to in the next slide is how will this impact your sewer and water responsibilities? And the simple answer is that that's not really your problem for this. If a developer decides to build in your MBTA community district, it's their responsibility to figure out the sewer and water. So if there's no public water and sewer, if a developer wants to build, they're going to have to figure out a septic system, and it's not the town's responsibility to facilitate that or pay for it. And so my basic message on water and sewer is that the town shouldn't worry so much about that unless it's really trying to make a certain project happen, and then it can put it in a place with public water and sewer. Okay, that's my background. Let's talk about Freetown itself. You all know at this point, from having gone through it, but a quick review. Freetown has to designate at least 50 acres where property owners will have the option to build multifamily housing. At least 20% of the zoning district must be within half-mile of your train station. But beyond that, you have a lot of flexibility. The other 80% can be anywhere in town, as long as it's not on publicly or educationally or institutionally owned land, or wetland, resource areas, rivers and streams, or protected conservation land. So anywhere else that's developable in the town, you have that flexibility to put it there. And then there's more you can control as well on the next slide. So you, you do have to give property owners this option to build multifamily housing somewhere by state law, but then you have a lot of flexibility on putting guidelines around what you want new development to look like. So you can regulate the maximum height of new developments, you can regulate minimum setbacks from roadways, open space or lot coverage requirements, requirements for vegetation to screen buildings from other homes, parking requirements, basic architectural design guidelines. I've seen some communities put in a, a condition for like traditional New England architectural styles, I think that's a popular one. And you can require up to 10% of, of units in new developments to be affordable for people making less than the 80%, 80% of the area median income, which comes out to about $67,000 a year. That's a major choice you should think about going forward. You don't have to do that, but you can. And one major thing you cannot do is you cannot exclude families or workers from living in these new homes by putting in any kind of age requirement for who lives there. That's in the regulations. All right, sorry, I'm, hopefully I'm not going on too long. Only a few more at this point. So there have been some legal cases, since you maybe first heard about this law, that I think it's worth going over, so you can be informed moving forward. So the first one was Milton Attorney General. About two years ago now, Milton, which was a rapid transit community, voted not to comply with the law. The Attorney General sued them. It was a pretty long court case. I went to the Supreme District of Court, where they ruled that the law is constitutional and enforceable in every MBTA community. So it's not, it's not an optional program. It is a state law that every zoning code has to contain some kind of multifamily in MBTA communities. What the state did is they reissued their initial compliance guidelines and regulations. Really, no major difference, just regulations versus guidelines. And they extended the deadline from initially, it was the end of last year, and then the deadline was extended to July 14th, 2025 of this year. So big takeaway is that it upheld the law, but extended the deadline a little bit. Second case, which was more recent, was Duxbury and eight other communities versus the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. A number of these communities made the argument the law was an unfunded mandate, meaning that it asked towns to take on expenses without state funding to pay for it. But that went to a local district court that ruled that the law is not an unfunded mandate. Zoning does not, is not an expense outside of the regular responsibilities of a town government, and didn't make any change to the law. All towns, including the ones that sued, are still required to comply by the same deadline. Okay, so where are we at now for compliance? 140 communities have complied, or at least they've submitted zoning plans intended for compliance, and then there are about 15 communities that missed that July 14th deadline in red. And you all know Freetown is one of them, but luckily, you have a little more time to comply now based on the latest guidance from the Attorney General. Moving, we can keep going. So as you know, as of July 14th, Freetown is non-compliant, but the Attorney General has put out an advisory saying she won't take any legal action against communities until the end of this year. So kind of another six-month extension for trying to figure this out. As of now, Freetown is not eligible for 17 state grants as a result of compliance, covering things like planning, sidewalk, roadwork projects, land conservation, economic development. Sure, no one's happy about that. Also, there's the issue where MBTA communities' compliance can be taken into account for all state grant programs, so it just reduces your competitiveness in trying to get state funding for things. And as I said, the Attorney General will bring an enforcement lawsuit early next year against towns that don't comply, and I'll go into, a little bit into what those lawsuits could mean in the next slide. So the big picture about a lawsuit is that you, the town could lose the option to control where multifamily zoning happens. We talked to our in-house counsel about what's likely to happen as a result of these lawsuits, and he pointed to the remedies that the state asked for in the original Milton case, and those included just escalating fines and fees until the town comes up with a compliance plan. It could mean the court appoints a special master to put in place a zoning plan, to drop that zoning plan and put it in place, or it could mean that the town is barred from denying applications for multifamily housing until it has a compliant district in place. We don't know which of these will happen. Likely the way this would play out is that the Attorney General will sue and say the judge should choose which way towns should be made to come to compliance, and then the judge would choose from roughly this list of options, although there could be more outside of this. There's no real certainty in how that would play out. And we will have a like legal memo on this soon, so really happy to share that with you all once we have it. In progress right now, so hopefully next week or two. Okay, sorry for the Debbie Downer part of this.
It's part of the presentation. Keep going, you're doing great.
So how could you work towards compliance? I think realistically, now that we're here with the Select Board and the Planning Board, the Select Board and Planning Board need to lead on this. If you're not committed to getting it done, it's hard to imagine town meeting voting for it. Having worked with 80 communities now, towns where the Select Board and Planning Board are behind it and speaking in favor of it usually passes, where they don't, it usually doesn't. So that's really up to you, whether you want to come out in front of this and really advocate for it, because I think that, that buy-in from the Select Board and Planning Board is necessary for this to pass. But if you want to, I think what's important to emphasize is that passing a district is the best way for the town to maintain control of local zoning. If a town doesn't go through this process of determining a district, you could end up in the scenario of a judge deciding how that plays out, which I don't think is what most residents want. They value that local control. And to that end, I think the question going forward, if you want this to pass, shouldn't be, "Do we comply?", but it should be, "How do we comply?" This is a process we need to go through and decide the best way forward, but it is a state law, and we're not going to say "if". But again, that is, that is your choice. This is just how this generally has been able to pass in other towns. And I think what's really important in, in pushing something forward after a failed town meeting vote is acknowledging whether, whatever negative feedback you've gotten in the past. There's always opportunities to improve a bylaw, to make it more responsive to what people are asking for. If it needs, the location needs to be changed in some ways, if some people are really mad about that. You won't be able to meet everyone's needs, or you won't be able to satisfy every request from everyone, but really doing your best to listen to people that have really enthusiastic opinions can really help move the needle. Okay, next slide. And what could you do for public engagement? So I should have backed up earlier. I'm here to present today and tell you about the law. I can also help you do some of those public engagement going forward. So here's some of the things you could do. One thing I'd recommend, if you want to move forward, is give yourself some good runway to talk to people, to get the word out, to answer their questions, and have any special town meeting about this as late as possible, to give yourself that time. Public information, try to get the word out. Again, I can help with this in providing you materials, social media, website, mailers, whatever you can do. Doing in-person engagement at community events, if you have school sports games, festivals, all of that, if you can get out and just talk with people, and especially talk to all your local boards and commissions that aren't here tonight, and make sure you're all on the same page as much as is possible. Office hours with the planner is really valuable as a way to just have one-on-one conversations with people that might be concerned, especially people, sorry to put pressure on you, anyone else can do that too. But especially people that their homes or businesses might be in the district, it can be really important to just have a good conversation and explain to them, you don't have to do anything as a result of this. People are often very scared of feeling like they're having the rug swept out from under them, but just telling them, "Look, you're getting another option for what you can do with your property." That conversation can be really valuable. And then I think more public Q and A sessions leading up to town meeting, just reaching everyone you can, and I can help do that, probably. Can't drive down to Freetown for all of them, but I can do that online whenever you need. So that's really important, if it's going to get done, and then let's talk a little bit about next steps, and I'm going to wrap up and have Q and A. So I think some of the things you might think about going forward is, thank you. I know, I've been talking a while, sorry.
Yeah, I'll take it from here, Will. Well, thank you for being here, thank you for being here and sharing your information. I could say, honestly say, we shared this every which way possible, whether it's social media, in person, just like you said, public engagements, getting people out here to answer questions. Ultimately, it failed twice at town meeting, right? The first time by a large majority, and the second time got a little bit closer, but it still failed. Now, we presented this information to the public, right, as in a neutral party, not for or against. We wanted the public to tell us what they want, this is what we're here for. We're elected by them, we're going to enforce or elect or push forward ideas made by them. So that being said, the old adage of, "Hey, this is my home, I lived here all my life, I want to live in a small community, I don't want to, I don't want to have this in our community." It's still their right to say that, right? That being said, we always want to be in compliance with the state, right, as much as possible. But this one seems, there's a couple of hard passes on what the community wants, community doesn't want. 750 units coming into town, per the electorate, right, per how they voted. Now, can we do things to present it to them another way? I'm all for it, right? I want to be state compliant, but also give the residents what they seek, which is for us to listen to them, right? So we're here, with you here today to kind of come up with ideas, to go back to them to make sure, one, we, we give them the right information based on what you presented here to us today. The laws, how they've changed, the 20 percentage, the new zoning district with a special master. Yes, we have questions on those. What does that mean exactly, right? What do the fines look like? I know some of it, you probably can't answer at today's meeting, which is fine, but it's something that we are keeping an eye on to make sure that we are in fact giving the public everything that we know, right? What we know is what they know, right? And that's what we want to present to them. So what do you say to that, Will? Like, you know, you have a town that doesn't want 750 units, point-blank. In fact, we go back into 2012, and this town did go ahead and create a bylaw, right, changed the zoning to eight-to-one versus the 15-to-one, right? To them, that was what they wanted, right? They created the entire policy and procedures, and they went through meetings, and that's what they wanted, eight-to-one. To throw another 15, to go up to 15, a lot of people have a hard time with that, right? The old town, the old community, we're here because my parents have lived there, my grandparents, they're afraid of that, which is understandable. So how do we, how do we crack that nut in a sense and kind of make people start thinking about, you know, the other side of things? Maybe they'll change their minds.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it, it's a tough thing, and I think it's hard when people tell you they want one thing, and you can't give them exactly that. And so I think the, the key is figuring out how you can get closest to what people want while having to stay within the confines of state law. So then the first thing, in terms of how I talk about this, is I will never talk about 750 units coming to the town, because that's just not a realistic approximation of what because that's just not a realistic approximation of what could happen here, right? 750 units is what would happen if every single property owner who you gave this option to develop multifamily zoning to did so. So if there's a lot of single-family homes, every single person would decide, I don't want to live here anymore, or I want to add, you know, 14 apartments behind my house. That's really not likely to happen. And so I think rather than ever talking about 750 units, because that's just not a way we really talk about zoning in any other context. It's just a formula the state made up to decide if every town is doing their fair share. I just talk about giving property owners the option to build multifamily housing. And if you want to talk about what we realistically see, we're talking about like over the next several decades, seeing some moderate-scale multifamily housing projects be built. And we don't know exactly how many it'll be, just because it depends on the decisions of individual property owners. But it will not be 750, that's the absolute maximum you could hit, right? Realistically, you're probably going to see, you know, 50 to 100 a year maybe, right? Or maybe in 10 years. We don't know exactly what that looks like, but...
Right, but it will. But ultimately, it would be up to 750 units. Whether we do it over one year or 10 years, eventually at some point, we're zoned up to 750. If I was a developer, I bought that land, I want to maximize my profit, so I want to...
And the point is that your zoning district isn't just one property, right? You probably have 20, 30 properties in that district.
It would take.
So for 750 units to get built, every single property owner would have to decide individually to redevelop. That's probably never going to happen. There's probably, as you said, people who have lived here for generations, they're never going to sell. Or they're not going to sell for 100 years, so...
Can we?
Yeah.
You want to open your meeting so that three of you guys can talk? Because they have a quorum now.
Oh, no.
Open their meeting, because I don't want you all to say anything until then.
There you go.
Just for quorum, we're going to open up the meeting with the Planning Board, as they have a quorum now.
All right, 6:32. Want to press this button?
No, you're good.
I'm good, all right. So it is 6:33. We do have a quorum now for the Planning Board, so I will bring the Planning Board meeting to order with the joint, joint meet with the Select Board. Let the record reflect who's present.
Okay.
So, so what was it, 20% has to be by the train station?
Correct.
So we're talking 10 acres?
Yeah, exactly.
Because I feel like when we have that large area over there, which we do have businesses there, it's more easily developed over there, and if we spread it out. So, I just wanted to make that clear, that we only have to put 10 acres by the train station. Another 40 could go literally anywhere.
Yeah, I guess my thoughts are, is it developable? Is it easier to develop? Yes, but it'd probably be harder because Stop &amp; Shop, say, that's in that district, isn't in the market of trying to redevelop their land. They don't have enough, they want more, and, you know. So I guess this is, you know, flip side of the point.
I agree and disagree with that, because we almost just lost Stop &amp; Shop.
Yeah, no, no, you're right.
And if we were to lost them, that would have been prime.
Well, here's where, well, here's my question. If it's only 20% at this point. Currently, we have a zoning that allows up to 350 units in that area, which essentially is eight units to one acre, right? Does that already meet the requirement that you're speaking of?
Yeah, the issue is that the way the state wrote the regulations is that it's not by, like, how many total units the town is theoretically allowing.
You want the zoning district.
It's, yeah, you have to have, you have to allow a certain density, right? You have to allow property owners to build up to 15 units per acre. And even if you have a large area where people only are allowed to build eight units per acre, that still doesn't meet that, that minimum density you have to allow.
Well, I was looking at that, and also the ADU requirement that the state passed, that essentially is creating the density you speak of, right? Not indirectly, well, sorry, not directly, but indirectly, it really is. If every property owner that has acreage, which is 1.6 on average here in Freetown, did their ADUs, that would fill up pretty quickly.
No, well, not quite, because if the average acreage is 1.6 per property, you can only add one ADU to your property. So now, instead of 1.6 units per acre, you have 3.2, right? But you're, you're still not hitting 15. So it's, you know, they both have a valuable role to play, I think, and, but they're very different development styles. ADUs, you're looking at, you know, one main single-family home with like a smaller cottage next to it. 15 units per acre, you're looking at duplexes, triplexes on small lots, or like kind of low-level apartment buildings on larger lots.
Well, here in Freetown, we look at it as our moms and dads are retiring, and then we're building a unit for them while the kids move back into the house. That's how we look at it in Freetown, right?
That's the dream, isn't it? Yeah.
It is, and that's where the ADUs kind of does make sense, as far as the zoning for this, from the state. But with 15 to one, you know, so we meet the 20%, which is about 10 acres in east, like, and next to the train station. So now you're saying we can spread it out the remaining 80% throughout the entire town?
Exactly, yeah, if you choose. So the, the only requirement is that each part of the zoning district needs to be at least five acres. So you could have a bunch of five-acre parcels all over town.
My thing is, is we just bought 32 acres of land?
Correct. They cannot be used for this, any town land or non-public entity, right? If it's, cannot be used for this type of...
I should say, there's one exception to that. If the town intends to develop it into housing, you can use it. It's just you have to kind of, in some way, state your intention to develop it.
Let's get that out of the way, there's no intention at this point. Anything MBTA-related with the 32 acres that was purchased at the special town meeting. Let's just get that out there right now, all right? No discussion has been made, nor we intend, so move on from that conversation.
Did they even take into effect that the town has an awful lot of property that's state forest, that can't be built on? And the MBTA train thing, you put on the side of a highway, which is forest land on the other side. So we lose that whole other side of the, of the train thing. We can only have that front part of it.
Will may not be as familiar with exactly where we're talking about, but the Freetown State Forest abuts the rail. And the rail abuts the PMA district that is currently already a bylaw in the community and a district on the zoning map. So yes, there is some constraints. And there are private, there are parcels that can't be developed, the MBTA owns one of them. As Stop &amp; Shop was already mentioned. There's a 12-acre parcel that has a lot of interest, but it has constraints, wetlands and floodplain that strips through the middle of the parcel, so that, that's going to be difficult to get there. And then you have a co-part, which I think has the most, most upscale value for a big, a big development there. And then I think EverSource has, has a lot, there's some storage, if I'm in the, in the right frame of mind, I think I'm hitting them. And then there's an old, an old family-owned business that is milling, for milling practices. And they've been in business for quite some time, we sure hope that they stay there. So, yeah, so that's, that's about what the district looks like. Good news, it's closest to the highway and, and those types of amenities. But they would still, as you said, have to get sewage in on those, and that gets tight. And I've seen developers like really struggle with getting permitted with septic and, and dense development.
And it was, there's a whole nother thing with the town's only allowed to give so much, was only allowed to give so much sewage to Fall River. So if you're going to put all these houses in, that's going to eat up the sewage amount that the rest of the town can't use.
The community, right, at this moment, does not have their own sewage treatment facility.
Yeah.
And they rely on the city of Fall River for any sewage treatment that is, is there. And I believe that line only goes to Stop &amp; Shop at this moment.
Correct.
So, but he's saying, obviously, we know that too, that it's the contractors, not with the sewer, that would actually run into a town problem. But if we put it in an area that didn't have sewer or, or water to it, then the contractor has to build his plant. They have to do their own water, and that's on them.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Which, honestly, I mean, if we zoned an area like that, it would be less likely that someone would buy it and develop it.
Very difficult.
Or put a big-scale project like the 15 per acre on it.
Yeah, that's kind of the balance you have to think about, right? Like, someone who's building 10 apartments, they're not going to pay for their own private water sewer probably. But that only really becomes economically feasible with like much larger projects. So it's kind of, you have to balance like, okay, if we zone a undeveloped area on the edge of town, it's less likely to get developed, but if it does get developed, it's probably going to be a larger project. Whereas if you're looking at like smaller lots in your downtown, what's realistic are like smaller two, 10-unit projects. And they might be a little easier to build, but they'll probably be smaller.
So, and so real quick, I just want to understand this. We have 50 acres in all, right?
Minimum, yeah.
Yeah. 10 acres next to the train, right? So we could have 40 acres scattered throughout town. So we could, in the, it could be five-acre parcels. So we could do eight, five-acre parcels scattered around town as we so choose.
You could, yeah. And one thing to keep in mind as you're, as you're thinking about it, is any, any wetland, any conservation land, doesn't count for that land total. So like if you have a, if you're trying to create five-acre parcels, you're probably looking at like, you know, a seven or eight-acre parcel. And then like the, if there's a river running through it, that won't count in the land area. So then the developable area will come out to five.
In so many feet, it can't be, it has to be buildable land.
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
Well, earlier you talked about a special master.
Yeah.
Walk me through that. Does that, does that mean a, a member of the Select Board joins this team? A member of the Planning Board joins the team? Or is it just we're completely cut out, and some random individuals, not in Freetown, decide what we're doing with our land? Is that how it's going to work?
Unfortunately, the answer is we don't exactly know yet. So, the Attorney General would ask a judge to compel the town into creating a multifamily zoning district in whatever way the judge deems just and proper. So, based on legal precedent, like appointing a special master is one of those options, and we don't really know how that would look. That could mean, you know, some state planning official comes up with a multifamily district and puts it in place for the town. It could mean that they take whatever multifamily district you already created yourselves and didn't pass at town meeting, and just decide that goes in place. It could mean some kind of like committee where members of the Select Board work with the state official to create a zoning district that allows you to meet in the middle and meet the requirements of the law. We're just not exactly sure, because it's ultimately up to a judge to decide that.
Is it okay if I ask Will a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but have you heard of other communities or other places where the special master has been applied to a community at all? I'm not familiar with it.
Not yet. So the only town that has clearly lost a court case already is Milton. And rather than face a lawsuit, Milton came into compliance after they lost that initial lawsuit. So, I didn't phrase that well. They lost the lawsuit, they were given an extra six months to comply themselves, and they did so. So they haven't faced a special master, they haven't faced any fines or fees. And in terms of whether this has happened with other issues before in Massachusetts, not really. Kind of one of the issues, one of the reasons that housing prices have gotten so high is that there hasn't been any kind of state push to reform zoning in many years. And so there's not really any precedent for the state asking towns to reform zoning, and then deciding what to do when towns say they don't want to do that. So this, this court case will be new, but what's clear is that, what's clear from the other court cases is that the law is the law here, and towns will have to follow it. It's just how will they be made to follow it, we don't quite know yet.
Roger, thank you. Earlier in your slide, you discussed that we cannot exclude families or workers. It's kind of a broad statement. What does that mean?
It means you can't put age limits, or age minimums on your multifamily zoning district. So a couple of towns have tried to make it so that only people 55 or older could live in multifamily zoning projects in their districts. And the state does not allow that as part of these regulations, because there are so many young people, families, families with children that are struggling to find housing. Makes it more difficult when you have age limits.
Well, one of the things I would say to the state, right? And I'm asking you here today, is if it's possible. I think I know the answer, but I'm just going to say it out loud. As a town, I think I could go back to my residents and say, hey, we're going to put multiple units everywhere around town, these five-acre, five-acre parcels, but it's only going to be for seniors, families from Freetown, right? Things like that. Is that something that I'm not allowed to do?
So...
Veterans from Freetown, things like that. Am I allowed to say, hey, I want 40% of all housing to go to our seniors first?
Yeah, I mean, so with MBTA communities, no.
Right.
You could, that's something the town could do, right? You could have, you could make zoning districts where there's a 55-plus requirement, that like you're zoning to allow 55-plus development, just not for this.
For this purpose, I couldn't say, hey, this zoning is going to be all 55-plus to meet this Communities Act.
No, you couldn't.
I'm just trying to figure out ways to sell it back to our residents and say, hey, this is what the benefits are.
Yeah.
Zone an area that someone wants to put a 55 community.
They could, they could. And they might.
It would be, didn't... Yes, great for the seniors, fantastic.
It would make you compliant, yeah.
We zoned, so they could do this.
Yeah.
We already know they want to put senior housing.
Yeah, you could do that.
Now we're talking, now it's something that the town would benefit from, as far as making sure our, our families, our seniors, our grandparents, parents have a home.
I mean, we could have to say that, though.
I think, I think, and no disrespect to the state, or to yourself, or anyone else, I think the state has missed the boat on the 55-plus. We are struggling with both sides. Young professionals, that middle income bracket, but seniors are right in there too. We're really struggling for seniors. I've talked to many residents in this community and others, and they just don't have a clear avenue to, to housing. So they're going to stay in their single-family home, because to sell it, they're only going to be transferring, they're not going to gain any income from it. So, so I think that's a missed opportunity. And it shouldn't be toward it as a bad thing to do 55-plus, but it should be part of the whole scenario for us to...
I believe we have a 55-plus bylaw already. Nobody's ever used it.
Right.
Right.
Well, especially now, that makes, it's, it's getting louder and louder, because our population here in Freetown is 25 to 30% on fixed income, right? Or, or senior living, right? So that, that's, that's appealing to not just the boards here, but also to the residents of our town. So that's something to think about. That's, you know, the state might have missed the boat, but I think Freetown, like, like we did in 2012, we created this PMA district, that's essentially the catalyst of what the state has done. They just made it a little bit bigger. But we had to foresight 12, 13 years ago to do this. I think, maybe the discussion to do it again with the senior housing.
And to Dave's point, that bylaw does include a caveat for 55-plus. So if the developer wished to do 55-plus, then there was bonuses for that.
You know, that, that's something that you should check. Because I don't know the answer to that, but it's possible you could put a bonus on top of your MBTA community's law that says if a developer is building 55-plus, they could build up to 20 units per acre instead of 15. That might be a possibility, I think it probably would be, but I have to double-check.
Yeah, definitely double-check on that. Because if there's a way we can make the math, and not to say in favor of just Freetown, but let's face it, I'm here for Freetown, I represent Freetown, I'm going to advocate on behalf of Freetown. Somehow the math can favor the residents of Freetown. I think it has a better chance of going in front of voters with the possibility of 50%, right? That's what we're trying to get to, right? Let's meet everybody in the middle. So, the more information we can get on that. Nancy, Chad, if we can get some more information as far as how the mathematics could work to present it to a town, so we can have those town meetings and bring everybody forward and discuss this. I think that's the way to go. What do you guys think?
Definitely.
Get a short timeframe. That's the problem.
Yeah, we have six months.
We're meeting tomorrow with, about this as well.
Okay.
So...
Right, so we have the January 1st, right? January 1st is our deadline, or is it the end of January?
Yeah, January 1st.
January 1st, yeah.
And, I mean, so technically, the town's already out of compliance.
Right.
But the Attorney General says that towns that are making good-faith efforts to come into compliance will not be sued until January 1st. So I think as long as, I wouldn't expect a lawsuit. If someone from the state asks you what you're up to, say, we're working on it, and you should be all set. I think they're probably saying that, because a few, few towns have just totally thrown in the towel and said, we're not going to do it, and the state might not decide to wait till January 1st for that.
Well, I'll stokey say we're in partial compliance by having the PMA district, all right? We're not in full compliance, but we have something there, right? It counts for something, you know? But I understand the state's ideas and how they want to move forward, but...
Fortunately, PMA is not by right, so...
Right, and that's the biggest catalyst of the whole thing, is the by right 16 or 15 to one on acreage.
Exactly.
Yeah, so, okay. Anybody, any other questions? I think a good Q and A here. You'll be at tomorrow's meeting as well, Will?
Tomorrow, I'll, I can zoom in if you need me to, but...
I don't think it would be necessary, but I'm going to share the, we're going to tape it, and I'm going to share that with the team. So just to back it up a little bit, the town did receive technical assistance from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Chappa was one of the partners that came in on this technical assistance. And we also have Bowler, who is also going to assist the community. They're going to help with the language, they're going to help with modeling, so that we know that the district that we've chosen, based on the language that we use in the bylaw, is going to be compliant. We'll have legal counsel review whatever we write, and I'm very delighted to have the second chance, because what I brought to the last town meeting, I wasn't as comfortable with. I want to be comfortable with whatever we bring to town meeting. I want it to be something that the town can, can agree to, and, and, and really buy, buy into that idea of, of what is going to be provided to them. So I think that's a good opportunity. So those two teams together, and I think Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities will also stay in tune. It helps to show too, that the community is trying to meet, meet these requirements. So I think it's, it's a good thing. But I do believe we should try to push back the full town meeting or create a special town meeting in order to make sure that you give yourself enough time to get through all of this, the public outreach part of it, and to write and do the modeling as well. It's got, I want that bylaw to really shine for you all, and to mirror some of the things that you had already voted on and in the PMA, because that's what they said yes to. So let's try to get as close to that as possible within what the community, the MBTA communities will allow.
No, I agree with you Nancy. I think it's get it back out there. I don't, I think maybe October meeting is probably a little soon, right? For this discussion, but that's something we can discuss in the background and get it out to the public as much as possible and get as many, many people there as possible. Like today, we have a handful of people and oftentimes when we do have town meetings, it's, we don't fill a room, right? So getting information out is difficult at times, but I think over the last past year, although we voted no to this, the residents came out, they asked some great questions, both in person, face to face and online, right? Some answers were just that, answers, right? They didn't really provide much of substance to those answers. So I think moving the next time forward, we put more information out, continue what we're doing with the outreach and then get Chappa and whomever else can help us get the information out.
The Attorney General's office, excuse me. They usually have to vet any kind of bylaw.
Yes.
What's the deal with that? Because obviously if we vote on it in December and we approve it and there's, and the language is not there, we have to go back and reapprove it. What's, what's their take on that? Are they going to, are they going to have the doors open, burning the candle 24 hours a day in October, November this year to help us? No.
Oh, helping you, I think so, yes. I mean, my understanding from having talked to the Attorney General's office is like they really don't want to be suing anyone, I think, you know? No one wants to be suing their own constituents. And so I think.
I think not just us a pair of chuckling, I think many that may be listening to this may chuckle as well. Right, I don't think the state wants to sue anybody, but I also think they don't have any problem doing so either, right? To make sure that their law is compliant or be enforceable. So I get what you're going to say, right? I know they don't like it, but they will as needed, right? To make sure that the law is followed.
Yeah, but my point is like if, if you want to engage with them on having them review your bylaw and they're late for some reason, they don't get to it in time, I would be absolutely shocked if they decided to sue you while you were asking for them to review their bylaw, right? As long as you're working in good faith, you've written a bylaw, it's intended to comply. If for some reason there's a hiccup and you run late, I don't think you're going to be penalized for that.
It's almost like, I believe what they've done in the past, they've give like constructive approval. Like they'll give you some approval with the caveat that they, that you would have to fix any of the things that they felt fell with outside of the bounds of the law.
Exactly. Yeah, so there are a number of communities right now, maybe five or so that are conditionally compliant, meaning there are a few small changes they need to make to their bylaws to make them compliant with the law. But they haven't lost any grant funding as a result of that, they're not going to face any lawsuits as long as they fix those issues. So if you made some kind of mistake, that's probably the status you would end up in.
I just want to inform everybody in about five minutes, we have an open public meeting. So about five minutes of discussion on this topic. We can always revisit it afterwards, but to keep the agenda moving, 7:00 PM, we do have a scheduled open public meeting. All right?
A Board of Selectmen meeting, you mean?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Well, I would just say too that I think whether it be January 1st or not, we want to make sure we do it right. We had some residents actually reach out to us, which we're meeting with one open meeting tomorrow here at 6:00 on the planning board. That's interested in some sort of a component of this. They actually want to do a lot less than this, but would accept the zoning for it. So that's one start. And then like I said, if we have to piecemeal it across town instead of having that one big 50 acre law where someone obviously, that'd be prime for a developer. So if we could break it and do it right, if we missed a deadline, we missed a deadline, but we're just going to make sure we do it right where, you know, I was born and raised here, my kids are, and they'll be here. We don't want it to be a mess, so. As long as it takes, as long as we're working on it, I think, I'm not worried about the deadline.
Right, right. It sounds like as long as we're showing compliance with the state, right? We're showing that we're due diligence moving forward, working with them alongside them with Chappa or whomever else, that we'll get some, some credit of sorts while we go through the whole litigation or bylaw review process, right? That's the general assumption of what could happen January 1st if we already have everything in place, voted yes at town by, a town meeting, moving forward, right?
Yeah.
We have grace period, I sense.
Right, I think, like make sure you have a special town meeting this year. You know, do everything you can to come up with something that people will vote for. But as long as you do that and people vote yes, then I think you're all set.
Right, well.
Which is not easy.
Right, that's the carrot, right? That's the carrot and stick. The carrot and stick is, yes, we always want to put something forward that people are going to vote on and pass, right? But at the end of the day, with our jobs to tell them the truth, all of it, whether they love hearing it or not, here's the truth, the good, bad and the ugly of it. And let them, and inform them as much as possible, right? And let them decide what they want. Can we push this and that? Sure, we can always, we can always push more information out, but generally it's the same, right? So it's a tough situation, but for, for the purpose of this meeting, Jared, on the general item number two is to discuss and vote on how to proceed to achieve compliance with Section 3A of MGL Chapter 40A, which is the MBTA Communities Compliance Law. I definitely think more discussions to be had, right? I'm not even sure if we're ready for a vote.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything, I think Luanne and I will go look at town meeting dates, which we had originally talked about November 3rd. We'll go back to the drawing board and see how late we can push that town meeting vote. So we'll bring that information back to the board and then we'll work with Nancy in terms of what her board is thinking. I think that we've been collaborating together, we have some ideas. I think the one thing that I would look for information from both boards is we've talked tonight about breaking this into smaller parcels, which I originally thought it would be, make good sense to break it into two. One piece on the Sonnet End and one piece on the East Freetown End. Just because of the way people's living habits are for the older generation, if they live in a Sonnet, they don't tend to go to East Freetown and vice versa, and you don't want to displace somebody that is used to their supermarket and their drugstores and whatnot. But do you want more than that? So that's the direction that I think the boards are going to have to help us go in, but I don't think tonight's the night to make that decision. But that's something that I would be looking for, like do you want five districts? Do you, do you want us to find areas? I don't know if it makes sense. You want these to be in a place where it's accessible by the train or by public transportation, maybe pretty walkable so that people don't necessarily need to have cars in them. So that definitely needs some further discussion to start. Okay, this is what we're going to start with and go from there. I do have, I think we have ideas of what people, we know the residents are looking for our senior housing for sure, so like to incorporate a piece of that into the zoning. So I think there's definitely more work. I'm not sure that we have something to vote on tonight.
I agree. What I do know is over the next few months, it's going to be a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions about the MBTA Communities Act and how it impacts our community, right? All sides of the town. I agree. I think for discussions to be had in the background and then bring it back up to another public meeting and discuss our way forward. All right, about a minute to go from 7 o'clock. Will, anything that you didn't get to say, you want to say, and here's your chance.
No, I thank you for having me. I appreciate it and just want to reiterate, I'm continuing to be here to answer questions and to help with any engagement that you need. So Nancy has my contact info. She can share it with all of you. If you have questions, please reach out to me. I'll try to answer if I can. And if I can't answer myself, I'll get you to the person who can, the person at the state or wherever else. And do I have anything else to add? Yeah, and engagement as well, like in terms of materials, if you all think, you know, is there a certain question you need answered for the public? Let me know, I can make that flyer, that graphic, whatever you need for you. So here to help and just please feel free to reach out.
Well, we thank you for being here and joining us tonight and thank you for answering our questions and the great presentation. We look forward to working with you again.
Thank you all for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lost my name tag. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the, adjourn the planning board meeting.
Motion made.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gentlemen, you all, we appreciate your time.
Thank you for inviting us.
All right. All right, thank you everybody. Thank you planning board for being here tonight. All right, we're going to move this, the agenda around today. We're going to go, move the executive session to the end of the meeting and go right into the public notice. All right, for those paying attention at home, I have to read a little bit of some verbiage. Thank you, everybody. All right. It being 7:01 PM, the town of Freetown hereby calls for public notice. Verizon New England Incorporated, N-Star Electric Company, EverSource Energy request permission to locate granted joint or identical locations for and permission to erect and maintain poles and their respective wires and cables to be placed thereon, together with anchors, guides and others such as standing and protecting fixtures as said companies may deem necessary in public ways or ways herein after referred to as requested petition of said companies dated ninth day of July 2025. We are here to discuss Water Street. Install one jointly owned midspan pole numbered 178-5 on the north side of Water Street. The new pole will be installed in line with a proximity 38 feet east of the existing utility pole 170-9 and approximately 75 feet west of existing pole, utility pole 170-8. Further, install one jointly owned stub pole numbered 17585-S South or 5S on the south side of Water Street. The new pole will be installed approximately 30 feet south of the proposed utility pole 170-85. The installation is being requested by EverSource to redesign the area to provide service to the new housing development as well as to provide for the distribution of intelligence and telecommunications and transmission of high and low voltage electrical current. All construction on this order shall be in accordance with the following conditions. Pole shall be sound timber, reasonably straight and shall be set substantially at the points indicated upon the plan marked 1642014-1A7N5NC petition plan in a package dated April 7th, 2025. File a set petition. The following are the public ways or parts of public ways along which the poles above referred to may be erected and the number of poles which may be erected thereon under this order. Water Street, two jointly owned midspan poles to be placed. Also, that permission being hereby is granted to each of said companies to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as may desire for distributing purposes. A hearing to consider the above will be held on August 4th, 2025 at 7:00 PM at the Police Station Community Room, 15 Memorial Drive, East Freetown, Massachusetts, when we're here. Petition in the commenting may appear in this public hearing. Yours truly, the Board of Selectmen. All right. How did I sound? Everything about good? Fantastic. Anybody here from EverSource, Verizon or N-Star?
Verizon, yeah.
Hey, sir, how you doing?
Good, yourself?
All right. You're back in front of us.
Good evening, my name is John Moore. I'm here representing Verizon for these two new poles to be placed on the midspan. The reason why these two new poles are going to, will need to be, need to be placed is because I guess there's a new development on, off of Water Street, if I'm not mistaken. And EverSource is going to need to upgrade the electric for this new development. So with that being said, if they upgraded the electric on the present poles that are there now, the two poles where, you know, in between where they're going, it's going to increase the pole load of those poles, which could become a safety factor if there's too much weight on the poles. And you have to factor in also wind load too, being closer to the coast here down at Freetown. So that's the reasoning why EverSource is going to be, wants to place, to have these poles placed purely for safety restrictions only for this, to serve this new development.
One of the things on this petition here, it states, maintain underground laterals, cables and wires.
Yes.
I look at that and I think to myself, we just paved that road, looks gorgeous. Are you digging up my road?
It could be if, if that new development wants to have what we call underground services as opposed to aerial, like poles going down that new street or whatever the case may be. They would probably bury them or, you know, probably I would think off the new pavement if possible. If they do have to trench or excavate the new pavement on that new development, obviously they will patch it back. It doesn't look brand new as always when you see those things happen. So that's probably why that wording is inside of this petition for that, in case that entire development is going to be fed via underground versus aerial.
All right, I have a question.
Sure.
One, the pole location isn't going to end up in the sidewalk, right? Because unfortunately in certain spots in this town where we have sidewalks, they end up having telephone poles in the middle of them and that really doesn't do us.
I know it's going to be in line with the two present poles, pole eight and pole nine right now. So if those are not in the sidewalk, the new pole that's going to go midspan is not going to be in the sidewalk as well. It would not.
And then my other question I'm going to ask, because I know the town administrator always asks it and I'm going to ask for her, is the poles are not going, we're going to be able to use the poles for our own sake, right?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. If you have any kind of like, say, say fire alarms that need to be run on the poles. So if you're presently on any of these poles now, absolutely. That's just, you know, the old telecom act of 1996.
We're doing a fiber optics project in town. And this came up, the reason why I bring it up is because up the road here, we had this issue with some poles and it wasn't listed in there and thankfully Debbie caught it.
Right.
And, you know, we could add the terminology, the language back into it.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
I just wanted to make sure I'm not saying that, I don't even know if we plan on having anything down there at this point, but just in case.
No, but like you said, for future purposes, anybody has the right to go on those poles, whether it's a cable company, an electric company or a town or a city company, well, town or city, if they're running their own fiber optics, if they have their own, say, alarm cables that go from, you know, down the street, pole to pole to pole or whatever. Absolutely, everybody has that right to do that and to apply for that. And if, like you said, in the future, if you're going to have any kind of cable, whether it's copper in or fiber, that's going to be going on these strings of poles, absolutely you have the right to do that.
Does that fit your need of what?
You know, we would like it in writing that we, we're allowed to use the pole for any government purposes.
Okay, I will definitely make sure if that, if that language is not in this petition plan, I will have them change that for you, for you folks here at Freetown as well.
Thank you. She neatened up what I was trying to help her with that.
Right, since we want permission to use it for government purposes as needed, right? Jared alluded to, we're using, we're doing fiber across town. We'd like to use that and other purposes that we see fit.
Sure.
Right?
Absolutely.
Now, is that something that you could add to all petitions moving forward? Was that, was that on us?
Absolutely, whatever the town of Freetown would like in the language for any future petitions that come down the road, you can absolutely ask to be that, to have that language in any petition today, moving down forward or whatever the case may be.
Perfect.
It'll save us all this conversation every time.
No, no worries.
Right, if we're going to say it over and over again, we might as well get it, get it done right the first time.
No, and I know, I actually do the town meetings for the city reverie up in Mass, so I'm usually sitting over there.
So you know, you know how it is.
I know. And I'm an old Verizon retiree as well, so.
Perfect.
Perfect. So yes, I do know the language and everything else, if something is missing and then we didn't forget to put that in there, we can't put our fiber on because it wasn't in the original petition or whatever petitions that come down the road. Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
You're more than welcome.
Let's see where it says to vote on it. Any other questions, Selectmen? I don't think there's anything on our agenda. Is it at the bottom?
Nah, right there.
All right.
All right, that's that one.
Have a different one.
Yes, that's that.
All right.
I was just going to say prove it subject to it not being in the sidewalk.
Right, so, thank you Debbie. So she just mentioned we're going to vote on it with the goal of approving it, subject to that. It's going to be in there saying that it's not going to be on the sidewalk.
With that new language and not being in the sidewalk.
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
So if you're all done with this part of collecting information, you conclude the public hearing?
Right. Anybody here butters or anybody in town that has any questions during this public hearing? Okay. Selectmen, any further?
Thank you, sir.
Town administrator, anything further?
I'm good with that.
All right. It is now 7:10 PM and I hereby close the public hearing, all right? So we can motion back into regular hearing, so we can vote on this on Agenda 14.
We can motion to close the hearing.
All right, I entertain a motion to close the hearing, the public hearing.
Motion made.
I second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, public hearing has been closed. We will enter back into regular session, it being 7:10 PM. And to move on to Agenda 14, discussion and any necessary vote for the above mentioned public hearing, which is the two poles on Water Street jointly owned midspan poles to be placed, not on the sidewalk, with given the government all, all purposes for use of that pole. Entertained that motion.
Motion made.
I second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you folks.
Thank you, guys. I'll be right, you as well.
All right, we have a few minutes to go before our next public hearing, which is 7:15 PM. So while we wait for 7:15, unfortunately we cannot start earlier, I wish I could. earlier, I wish I could, so we'll just keep going along onto public agenda number five, and move down until the time is here. All right, Selectmen Zager, number five, discussion and vote whether to approve the open meeting minutes from seven-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five. I have read them, I thanked our meeting minutes taker, they were great, there's a lot of things discussed in those minutes, I don't see anything that would stop us from approving them, I'll buy from you.
All right, everything looked good to me as well.
I entertain the motion to approve the open meeting minutes from seven-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five.
Motion made.
I second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, number six, discussion and vote whether to approve the one-day liquor license applications for Thomas Chu Boys and Girls Club Incorporated for eight-seven, twenty-twenty-five. All right.
Representative in the room?
All right, I was going to ask, any representative? Hello?
Hi, we are hosting a fundraiser for Great Summers for Great Futures, it's becoming an annual event, so we're going to have food trucks, beer and wine, and there's only going to be about a hundred people, I believe. We actually applied for a police detail as well, how the decisions are, and that's all we get. Any questions?
No.
Do you have that?
Well, I know that this is, this is not the first time doing this, so I'm glad that you're using that liquor license, right? A lot of people don't realize, it's a pretty straightforward process, doesn't really cost much money, it could do quite a bit for your organization as far as fundraising and everything else, so how, let me ask you this question, how was the process for you? Was it pretty straightforward, as I just said? Okay.
It's been pretty straightforward the last couple of years that we've done it.
Perfect, and that's, as far as your organization, has that increased participation, more smiles from the adults?
Yeah, it was a smaller event at first, we're trying to also build our alumni base from camp, because we've been around for a very long time, we do a very good job of doing that, so we're working on building, building back our alumni base, and let's see, I think the event is casual, we have two food trucks, but it's also, we have, white is going to be the bartenders.
Oh, La France Hospitality, yeah, I saw that on the application, so.
Well, good for you. Well, I'm glad it's working out, I'm glad it's a process that is pretty straightforward, and it's benefiting the Boys and Girls Club, great organization, I'm a proud member, so congrats. Selectmen Zager, any questions, concerns?
No, everything's, you know, signed off properly, everything's done right, so I have no problem with approving this.
I like the easy ones, all right, let's do it, let's entertain the motion to approve the one-day liquor license applications for Thomas Chu Boys and Girls Club Incorporated for eight-seven, twenty-twenty-five.
Motion made.
I second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, congratulations, thank you. All right, seven-fourteen, about to hit seven-fifteen, so again, like before, I have to go into open public meeting, so.
You just have to wait one minute.
So, I got to read some things again.
You just have to wait that one.
Yep, just got to wait for that thirty seconds to go through, in the meantime, everyone can just take a deep breath and relax. All right.
You can do number ten, maybe?
Number ten, let's see what we got here, yeah, we can do those, instead of going open public meeting, let's go to Agenda ten of today's agenda, which is discussion and vote whether to approve the exclusive use of the bandstands for the rescheduled Summer Concert Series date of seven-twenty-nine, twenty-five, due to heat on nine-nine, due to heat to nine-nine, twenty-five. So, it was, it was very hot, a hundred-plus degrees out on the twenty-ninth, and we're kicking it off in September, on September ninth, that's the gist of it, right?
Yeah.
Hundreds of people have showed up the first time around, I encourage everyone listening, and even here in the audience, to come out and enjoy some great music. All right, I entertain, any questions, concerns?
No.
All right, all right, I entertain the motion to approve the exclusive use of the bandstand for the rescheduled Summer Concert Series with the original date of seven-twenty-nine, twenty-five, due to heat to nine-nine, twenty-twenty-five.
Motion made.
I second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, moving along, now being seven-fifteen, we go back to our town notice, our town public notice, all right, it is August fourth, twenty-twenty-five, now being seven-fifteen P.M., I board the Selectmen, hereby give notice that the application has been filed for open public notice, public notice, to be filed to transfer the package of store wine and malt beverages license from Neon Beverage LLC to Cumberland Farms of Massachusetts Incorporated, manager Kara Krelman. A public hearing is considered the above matter to be held on Monday, August fourth, twenty-twenty-five, at seven P.M., at the Police Station Community Room, fifteen Memorial Drive, East Freetown, Massachusetts, zero-two-seven-one-seven. All right, anybody here on behalf of Cumberland Farms, or Neon? Hi, if you could state your name and who you are.
Yes, my name is Elizabeth Pisano, I am counsel for Cumberland Farms, and with me tonight is Kara Krelman, she is the proposed manager of record. This application is to transfer the existing beer and wine package store from Neon to Cumberland Farms to be at the same location, they're going to keep all the same employees on board and the manager, so what you'll basically see is just a change of ownership, and Cumberland Farms is taking over a couple different Neon stations in Massachusetts, and Freetown and Quincy being two of them, that have package store licenses. So the operations in the store will remain the same, the coolers will be the same, everything will be the same, it'll just be under new ownership, so I am happy to answer any questions that you have.
Well, you just answered one of them, would the sign change?
Yes.
Okay, so, so something for people to see, all right, I don't think there are any highway signs, correct? I think it's just the ones on the road itself, but, yeah, just change those, okay, well, welcome Kara, how are you today?
Good, how are you?
Good, welcome to Freetown.
Well, I've been in Freetown.
Oh, fantastic.
They're keeping all the same in place, she's the manager of record there now, so she's been familiar with there, she is tip certified, she is, she knows all the rules and regulations relating to the sale of alcohol and safe service, so it's good that Freetown will have somebody with experience here.
Absolutely. Carl, any issues with this?
Uh, gee.
Our building commissioner is here, might as well always ask him while he's in the room.
Yeah, and I'm assuming everything, we're keeping exactly the same hours of operation, everything else, okay.
Yep.
All right. No, not for you, all right, well, okay, it's pretty straightforward, this isn't the first time Neon's come on the board, as far, in other businesses as well, changing the manager from, definitely the first from the, changing store names, but that's okay, you know, we love Neon, but we like Cumberland Farms as well, so, welcome Cumberland Farms, I should say.
Thank you very much.
And I don't know if you can even answer this yet, but when does the conversion look like it's going to happen?
For this store?
When will the residents see the flags flying?
So we're going through the processes, we also did apply for the common victualers license, we're working with the town to get their business certificate, working with the Board of Health to get some other things transferred over to them, so as soon as that process happens, they'll probably take over as Cumberland Farms sooner than later, but the alcohol sales won't take place, or they won't sell alcohol until the A B C C gives final approval.
So there'll be a temporary disruption where, and will all liquor, beer and malt beverage, wine be pulled from the location, or locked away from?
It'll be locked away.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Just to save the manager and associates, a whole lot of aggravation if customers seeing it and not being able to buy it.
Right.
Thank you.
Now that I have the manager and the legal team here, I have a question about your Neon reward points, so, oh, it's a question, I know, you guys do have points, I want to make sure it's transferable to Cumberland Farms, or vice versa, so that my residents don't get, they lose out on some...
That's a great question.
Thank you.
That's a great question.
If you could look into it for me, and so I can provide positive feedback, and, you know?
We can look through some docs, see if that says anything about the points.
Well, my experience with it is, you go there, you can order your pizza, that's through the app, and you get some points from it, and it's pretty good pizza, I don't want to miss out on it, also don't want to lose my points, so I'm going to make sure, I'm sure those residents out there is thinking the same thing.
I'm sure.
So, if you could, greatly appreciated.
Yes, we'll look into it.
All right, is this number fifteen? All right, well, anybody else, any questions, concerns from anybody in the audience, from the board?
I'm just going to let the record show that we do have the receipts for the Butters notices for both public hearings, Luanne has them and has checked both of them, and they're all in compliance.
We want to make sure everyone knows what's going on, all right, well, thank you for being here, that being said, I'm going to entertain a motion to close the public meeting.
I'm motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, for this meeting, we have Agenda item number fifteen, which is discussion and vote whether to approve the requested transfer of the package store wine and malt beverage license from Neon Beverage LLC to Cumberland Farms of Massachusetts Incorporated. I won't mention the Neon points just yet, but I entertain the motion to approve said motion.
Motion made.
All right, I second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, have a great night.
To your points.
Triple my points, all set, no, no, but the pizza is good, so I do recommend the pizza. All right, thank you, everybody. All right, so, I think we're back to Agenda item number seven, all right, let me, give me one second, folks, let me get that on my computer, make sure I'm not missing anything, all right, perfect, all right, all right, I motion to go back into regularly scheduled agenda for tonight.
Motion made.
I second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, now we can go into subject item agendas, number seven, discussion on resident complaint of eighteen Jordan Lane, all right, I see Mr. Rego, I think you have your mic on?
Yes, sir.
For the record, can you just say your name and where you're from?
My name is Daniel Rego, eighteen Jordan Lane.
All right, Mr. Rego, welcome back, I know we spoke prior to, on July twenty-eighth, prior to the special town meeting.
Thank you.
You came to us with concerns regarding a neighbor potentially operating a business and parking their vehicle, I know from, since that time, we've spoken both to police chief and the building commissioner regarding said issues, or potential issues, I should say, and the information provided to you by the police chief was fairly accurate, as far as what the road conditions and what he can and can't do regarding those laws, as well as our, our building commissioner, Carl Brazaro, he's also been out to the, to the residents in question, and to check whether or not there was a business operating out of said entity. Carl, can you add your input to the situation, if you could?
Everything comes out of complaint, initially with the complaint, Mr. Rego, probably two years ago now, went out, so got a complaint, investigated, found violations, letter went out to the owner.
Carl Brazaro, building commissioner.
Thank you, Carl.
So, it started with a complaint from a neighbor, a complaint was made, went out, investigated, did found probable cause to further that, so the letter went out to him to stop storing business equipment, junk parts in the yard, stop having a tractor-trailer running a business out of the yard, he's complied with that, as of today, he's also rescinded his business certificate, which he had on file with the town, he's rescinded that, so he no longer has that, and so now we're left with everything and zoning I could do, I did do, but as you might be aware, again, zoning system, the curb into the property, and then the curb out to the street is not zoning, so, I'm pretty much tied up with we can and can't do, and it happened in other places in town, we have tractor-trailer issues, so we try to work through these things, one by one.
Right, this is, this is an isolated issue with that residence or neighborhood, this does happen quite often throughout town, right, especially with those that work in the business of trucking or automotive, they tend to, you know, bring their work with them, so they get ready to go the next morning, so, as far as the laws, parking, right, for last time, you mentioned camp, certain distance to the curb, driveway, like Carl just mentioned, any additional, I know you looked into it, any additional guidance we can provide to not just Mr. Rego, but the town in general?
I had a chance to look at some of the photos that Mr. Rego had provided to the town regarding his observations of the vehicle being parked on the roadway and in the sidewalk area, and they were, what I saw was considerable minor violations of bylaws of potentially parking on the sidewalk or the curbing area where the owner of the TT unit was parked, it looked like he was potentially doing some type of maintenance to his vehicle, but normally any type of violation was such, like a civil infraction, officers would respond and investigate, and the discretion to the officers to take action, or give a verbal warning, or whatever the officer feels fit to do, and normally, something like that, we would ask the, you know, the violator to move their vehicle, and most of the time, things get moved without, you know, issues, and bylaw violations may or may not be issued, but regarding what I saw in the photos, the trucks being parked on the side of the roadway, keeping open access to emergency vehicles was clear, it was still available, wouldn't, you know, say it would be an issue, but other than that, I didn't see anything major that needed warranted police actions with those photos.
Okay, just for reference, have you conveyed that to Mr. Rego?
I had a chance to speak to Mr. Rego this week, and we went over the bylaws that are listed on the town website, and may I say that they are impressively updated on the site, so it makes it very clear and easy for residents or any commuter to have an understanding what the bylaws are, and we talked about those bylaws, and those specific bylaws is our bible for the police department regarding enforcement, we don't try to operate outside of them, we try to treat people fairly and equally across the board, and though, not to say that there weren't any bylaw violations, but we would address them compassionately like anybody else in the community if they violated it.
Right. Carl, anything with the bylaws, or anything that future bylaws can revise, or?
The only thing I might consider, and I'd be willing to work with CBA and planning, is maybe have a discussion about what's allowable for tractors, with trailers, trailers with supplies in them, coming into the prop, you can have the discussion, but as it is right now, there's nothing that I can enforce that would relieve some of the, what he's experiencing from his home, it does happen, but there's nothing in the bylaws prevents them from doing that that I can enforce, but, we still want compliance, we did a couple of things, he cleaned up the yard, he took the business away from there, so we've done these things, now we're down to an issue where we have a tractor-trailer parked in the street, and to his point, noise, that could be a noise, you know, frustrating, tractor-trailers run for a while, you know, two, three, four in the morning, could be a problem, some of the town, maybe you have to look in, into the future.
Okay, good to know. Mr. Rego, you're here before us again, we've done our due diligence as much as possible, well, based on what we're hearing here, right, ultimately, this comes down to a civil matter between yourself and the neighbor, but it is our job as town selectmen to help alleviate some of the concerns you may have, right? And that's through, working through our police and through our building commissioner, and trying to see where we can find common ground with the residents.
Well, thank you for that.
I know it's probably not everything you want, right, it's probably, doesn't hit every single button, however, it does sound like some improvements have been made, right? Is there anything we can do as far as a town, or is there anything that you want to comment on, provide more information for, we're just trying to make sure that we have a clear understanding of today, yesterday, and how we move forward, right? Maybe we learn from this, from a future bylaw.
Well, thank you, Selectmen, and I'd like to say thank you to the chief for calling me back, and I said it before, Carl did his due diligence on what he had to do, and after going through the bylaws and getting some consultation from individuals that I'm familiar with in terms of zoning and whatnot, the chief and the building inspector are correct, and in terms of commercial vehicles of that magnitude, using the town streets to park their vehicles, for the longest time, these individuals were bringing a company apparatus, eighteen-wheelers, triaxles with pavers on it, I mean, we're talking heavy, big construction from another company from North Smithfield, so they were using that, you know, instead of going to the shop, they bring their vehicle, vehicles and go directly to the job site. Like I said, things, the last nine days, things have grown, I think they got the message, hopefully, they did, however, for a proactive approach from the town's perspective, I would like to see some spearheaded in terms of putting the simple language where no commercial vehicles are allowed to stay for more than an hour between six and six P.M., just like every other, so many communities around us, Fall River has it, you know, from my expertise, but nevertheless, things are great, things are good, the compliance has been, they're doing, they're living life, and there's no more tractor-trailer, it hasn't been in the last nine days, and I hope that it's been resolved, and again, if I can help you, the selectmen, the town, the building inspector, the chief of police, in any way to see that this amendment or bylaw gets created to not, there's million-dollar homes being built around the area, these people in other areas should not be subjected to what I've been subjected to, okay, and that's all, and things are great.
What district do you reside in? Are you the first, second, or third district in Freetown? You know, when you go vote, they ask you what district you're in.
Oh, I go vote at the school.
Right, but are you District one, two, or three? The reason I ask is, we do need volunteers, all right, to be on some of our boards, right?
Absolutely.
So if there's something you want to take action on, best way is to get local and work with the municipalities and volunteer your time.
I would like to see that, I would like to see that, and I am going to take you up on that.
Absolutely, go to the town webpage, right there, the boards, vacancies, everything that's open. Go ahead and apply for it. We need, we need new individuals in different boards and committees across town. All right? Well, good. You know, it's probably after the resolution, we, like, everyone in the situation warranted or wanted. But it sounds like we're, we're pushing along in the right direction, right? Some things have been resolved, right? Looks like some enforcement has been done, right? And I think that's good. And hopefully, you can still talk to your neighbor. Ultimately, that's what we want. We want neighbors to be neighbors and be a community. Maybe it takes some time, but let's mend those fences if possible, if there are any amended fences to be made. You know, your neighbors are your lifeline. What's that?
No harm, no foul.
Exactly.
It's in the rearview mirror.
Yep. We'll, we'll learn from the experience and really do our best to move on. Hopefully, it doesn't come in front of a board again. Sometimes it does, and we'll deal with it then. But work with your neighbors and not just this situation, any situation. Sometimes the easiest solution is the simplest one, is just having a conversation with the person across the street, right?
Yes, sir.
But it's tough. I can, I get the other side of it as well.
Thank you, Mr. Regal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank both of you gentlemen, because I know, you know, you're here late during the day and everything. And so I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
For being here.
All right. Moving on to agenda item number eight, discussion and vote whether to approve the Council of Aging parking lot upgrades. All right.
All right, we got Jim Neuss from GPI here who helped design this. We're working on trying to improve the parking lot to get more parking, as you know.
Thank you.
The COA with their new pod and their expanded programming, they're getting a lot of participation. And so we need to get more parking. GPI has been tasked with that, with that issue to make more parking. But one of the things is that it changes the entrance way. So I thought, I'm gonna, I think this should come before the board just for their input before it's finalized. If we're not finalized yet, we're hoping to do this in the fall. So we kind of got to get moving so we can put it out to bid. We know we got funding at town meeting. We allocated the COA's money to use for this parking lot, which is a pretty big undertaking. But the parking lot's not ADA compliant as it is now. We want to do our best to get it more compliant. We'll say that. So I'll turn it over to Jim Neuss, who can go over it in further detail.
Thank you. She hit on all the points I was going to do. Yeah, we've been, we worked on the first phase, the, the pod. And yeah, now, we met out two or three months ago. And actually, the direction mostly was get as much parking as we could on the site. So we've looked at it. These are preliminary plans. If, if the board doesn't, if the board sees something you don't like, we'll take that, you know, we can look at it. This definitely, you know, something we were looking at. Just to orientate, orient yourself, Chase Road's at the bottom, the ball fields are up off the page on the top. The rectangle over to the left is the old police station, which the food bank's now using. And the area that's encircled in blue is the Council of Aging building. I didn't color in everything. I just wanted to color in the, the highlights of it. Right now, in that small length of Chase Road, there are four driveways. There's that, like, slip-right turn that goes in.
Right.
I want to call it the main access drive, which is in blue. There's a third one that goes into the police station. And way over to the left, there's a fourth one that runs from Chase Road to, to Memorial Drive. So as part of this, we were looking at how can we maximize the parking? Well, one thing was to, to eliminate two of these driveways in green. And that opens up parking off to the, the lower right-hand corner. And also, it opens up parking off to the, the food bank. One of the problems with the food bank, too, is people pull into that driveway and there's no way out. They have to turn around and come back out the road. So what we're proposing is, which is in dark blue, is now the driveway right off of that, for lack of a better term, the cut-through that goes from Chase to Memorial Drive. That way, at least, people can come in and this would be up to the food bank, whether they came in from, from the cut-through and circled the building that way, or if they came in from the main entrance drive and circle the, circle the site that way. Everything in gray that you see in the parking areas, there's a large one off to the top right. Right now, that's a reclaimed pavement. It's not as big as, as what we've shown here, but that's where the, they put in reclaimed pavement about six months ago for additional parking. One of the problems, and I don't want to call it a problem, but a lot of people who go to the ball fields, park in that area, they use the Council of Aging. So we're trying to maximize that. So the parking lot actually would go all the way to the path that runs around, and we'd have a connection to that path.
That's a great idea.
Up in that area.
It's a great idea. I love it.
I like that, too.
Other than that, everything in light blue is, is basically the existing pavement. What we're looking to do is reclaim that whole area. Most of the pavement now is either torn up or it's, it's beat. We're talking about reclaiming that. So there'll be extra material. We do need to fill in down in front of Council of Aging building. So we, we're going to use that material. We haven't found out if we need more material or not. But that was the intent, was we'll reclaim this pavement. When you reclaim, you end up taking off the top four inches. That's extra. You have to take that off so you can put in four inches of mix. So this extra material, and rather than hauling it offsite, we'll just, we'll just bring it down into there. I, so that's the highlights in this. We've been talking about a courtyard area, which is not part of this project, at least the amenities. We will probably set it up, but I know the Council of Aging had submitted a grant. I don't know if they've heard or if that's in the...
The patio?
Yeah.
I'm not sure either.
Yeah, I do have, and again, this is not part of it, but there's something that we could do. I do have a sketch that the, submitted with the grant application of what they could do. So we were talking about, you know, putting that in, in concrete and doing some trees, a couple of benches under the trees, a couple of tables where, you know, you could sit outside in the warm weather and discuss it. So it's more of a functional area right now, right? That would be in between, you know, the, the pod is off to the right side there and the, the Council of Aging building on the top. So it'd be right in that nook area.
Jim, in this area, that's my park there, in the wheelchair, I've rolled down the hill, right?
Yeah.
Are we going to fix the grading from that pod down?
We're going to fix a little bit of it, but, but in terms of trying to fix that whole parking lot, we're talking, because it goes, what we'll do, all the handicap spots will be at two percent. But from there, it goes down to the road. I think it's at about five percent as it is. We're going to try to pick it up a little bit, but to try to pick up the whole thing, to make the whole site two percent, probably talking at least a six-foot wall all along Chase Road.
Right. We don't want that.
My, my question, I guess, is, so you're seeing everything in gray is proposed new parking, right?
Correct.
So on the bottom right, not the big stuff out back, because I actually like the idea of that and then tying it into the walking path, because we've always talked a lot about the access for residents and senior citizens to be able to use that walking path. So I absolutely love that. My question is, is why wouldn't, and it might be a grading issue, I don't know, but that bottom, those ones that are closest to Chase Road, be put in between the COA and the food bank, the food pantry? So that way, they would increase parking, because one of the things I worry about is if we're talking about accessibility out of that parking lot, that food bank gets a lot of traffic, right, when they're open? So people park kind of all over. So would, wouldn't it make more sense to put some parking down there in between them? And that, kind of two birds, one stone type mentality?
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at that. I'll make sure, I'll make a note of it and to look at that. I do know from this plan, this plan's a couple of weeks ago, we do have a revised plan, but rather than confuse everything and bring the right, I wanted to bring in the one that the board has already seen.
Mm-hmm.
And I know they've added several parking spaces, more than what's shown in this plan. But we'll definitely take a look at that and more spaces towards the food bank.
And I, and I do know, if I remember correctly off the top of my head, the grading kind of does go down kind of hard onto the left. So that might be an issue as far as that goes. But it could be something to look at. It, it's worth, it's just worth mentioning, because I'm looking at it and saying...
I mean, we did add, I think we did add some down by the food pantry in the gray, right?
Mm-hmm.
And I think, so our conversation was maximize the parking because it has multi-use, right? We use it for the COA, but the food pantry uses it, and that's sort of after hours, after the COA closes. So they can use all of this parking as well. And the baseball, people use it, and that's on the weekends and also after hours. So when people say, why are you spending all this money on the COA building? Because this has multi, this is, this parking is for multi-faceted things. It's, it's, it's used a lot more than I think the public realizes. And so that's why we say, like, get as much parking as possible, because when you have a big baseball tournament, they're parking everywhere. Even a town meeting or a meeting at the school, this isn't far from the school, especially if you can cut in through those trails and up, up through the ball fields and across the street. So that, that was the direction. As much, get as much as you can possibly get, because we will use it for multi-different things.
Absolutely.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
So I was just looking at the, the old police station, being the, the food pantry. On the north side of the building, what I recall was the septic system was in that grass area in between the entrance way. I don't know, is that a factor? Is the, the septic system still there? Or is it somewhere else? Have you looked at that?
I don't know where it is for the P.
I always thought that the septic, oh, maybe, no, that's different.
It was connected together, wasn't it?
Yeah. But...
No, no, the COA has their own. That's, that, we know where that is.
So I know that stuff can be driven on top of if the piping's correct, right? And that's a whole different thing.
Well, as long as it's been considered. I'm not really sure what can be done there. But I just know, I've never seen the septic plans. I've always been told that that's where they emptied out the tank or whatnot. And it's in that general area. So just, you know, keep that in mind.
That's a good call.
Now, this is a great project, because you, you're absolutely correct. This, this area gets used so much, right? Not, especially during the day for our seniors and other events, especially with the food pantry, but also schools and the baseball fields. They use it quite often for different events, especially when they're having the same events together. Adding more parking to that general area is also a great idea. Would mind seeing some of it to the, to the north of the, into the west of the, that little area right there, to the left of the shed. Maybe there's additional parking we can squeeze out of there in the future.
There's elevation, I should say.
Yeah, I was going to say, I thought I was thinking was the elevation was going to be what you were going to tell me was the constraint, because the parking lot does drop off in between the two. But...
Yeah, no, it's a positive way forward.
At the end of the day, there's a whole lot more parking, and we'll fix some of the grading issues.
Yeah.
What did you say, sixty additional?
Sixty right now. I think they added another half dozen. So it's varying, but, but it's, it's well over fifty right now.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, one, one area that we looked at and we didn't think it was practical, there's a, right now, there's that lawn area. So you have on the right side of the, say, the loop road, on the immediate right side is a septic field, septic system there. And then this grass area right there. But it seemed like it was so far out beyond the Council of Aging. We were trying to keep all the parking spaces within a couple hundred feet of everything. Right now, they all match that except for a few spaces down for the food pantry, but most of those would probably be used by the food pantry. So we weren't too concerned about it. But it does start to, you know, there's a lot of land there. And, but it's just what would, what would be practical, you know, to, for people to use.
No, I like, it looks, looks different. I look forward to seeing with the, the driveway's gone, right down to two, how it's all going to look. I'm assuming that we're going to landscape all that and make it look nice from the road.
Yep.
It's going to look nice for the neighborhood. Good. I'm happy for the Council of Aging. This is a nice addition.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, squeeze it in where you can, Jim.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Fantastic. Selectmen, zagger, any questions, concerns, or further discussions on this?
No.
This is, Deb, anything to add that we missed?
No, I mean, I've, I've been working with GPI and Rebecca, and she's taken this before her, you know, before the COA board, too, just to get any input from them. Chuck, we've all been out there working on this. I mean, you know, it's always hard when you're backpedaling into something that's, you know, trying to work around what's already existing. But I do think it, it'll be a great improvement, like I said, for all the things that I said, because we, we don't, we never have enough parking. And just Rebecca and what she's doing during the day is incredible with her programming. And like I said, food pantry, this, you know, because when I go there, if there's an event and the, the parking's all full, I park down at the food pantry, because they're only open a couple of days. And, and they don't mind. And so that's sort of your overflow. But the capable people can park down there. It's not a big walk.
Yeah, no.
And, but then when the food pantry has their stuff, they can then use it. So it works well. I think, I think it's, it's, it's a good plan overall for us to get the parking where it needs to be to make everybody safe, I think is the goal for, for the seniors, to be able to walk safely into the building.
Yeah. No, I agree. Especially, like you, like you said, Rebecca and everybody has reported some up, a massive uptick in participation, which is phenomenal, exactly what we wanted with the pod. It only makes sense to add the parking to follow suit, right? It's a good problem to have, you know? Well, thank you, Jim. I appreciate it. I think CPI and I think we, we have a good way forward.
Yeah.
All right. I entertain the motion to approve the Council of Aging parking lot upgrades.
Motion made.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Make it so. You say it was the fall, fall timeframe?
It was like October, but I don't know if we're going to make it, but...
Yeah, I think it was October. She, Rebecca was going away on vacation, and she was talking about closing down.
Yeah, we have to close this. We're going to have to close the COA for a good week or two.
Thank you. That was my next question, how long we're to close on COA? And I'm assuming they already, they're already discussing that with their own program and everything.
We're, we're working that out. But that's why we're kind of got to get this moving.
Is there any secondary, not to this conversation, parking lot while we're closed for that week or two, do we have any secondary options as far as where they'll keep, continue having events? Maybe here at the police station?
Yeah, probably very minimally, we could do it here, but it's going to be difficult. And I want to say the chief's got stuff going on here in November.
Yes, we have our accreditation assessment three days when we're locked into this room. I want to say seventeen days from nineteen comes to mind.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll work on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, sir.
Thank you. I hope you have a great night.
All right. Fantastic. Love parking. All right. Number nine, discussion, vote whether to, who to designate as authorize Google Analytics data contact for the town of Freetown's website, where to authorize the town administrator to sign the user access form and waiver for this purpose. Deb, we love signing these things.
I know. I think this is just something for our new webpage, that they want whoever signs it to be the contact person. But when you're signing it, you're basically signing away your legal rights to go after them for any mess-up. So I don't sign away the town's legal rights. That's the board of selectmen.
Thank you. This lucky person that's authorized, is this for the general public to complain about as far as, hey, I can't get onto your website, I can't find this website, can't find that? Or is this for your selectman here that loses his password every other week and needs your help?
This is just, this is for the upgrade that we're doing to the, the webpage that we talked about in the past that had to be done, that our time, the platform's no longer sustainable. So we have to upgrade the webpage that all the residents use to go on to find information. So they're just asking for the signature, right, and I think?
Right. I think what they're also needing is one employee who can access the Google Analytics page. Right now, Lola gets that. And usually, it's not used very frequently. It's like the library every year needs to know, like, how many hits did they have on their page and stuff like that? So Lola will go in and do that. So we just need one person that can do that.
So essentially, how many likes, how many smiles, how many frowny faces, things like that?
They need data for, like, grants and things to that effect.
Got it. No, that's, I can see them needing more and more of that as, as we get more tech, techno, technological, technological? Technology kicking in more and more. I can see that being a bigger, a bigger pull for them to get the information on. Okay. So Deb, it sounds like you want to be it.
Oh, I, I'm ecstatic. When this came up, I said, oh, my God, this is what I've been waiting for my whole life. Like, you know, you've hit the big one when you get to be this, I can't even say what it is, data authorize Google Analytics data contact. I mean, who wouldn't want to be that?
You're going to hang that right next to your law degree. I know.
Yeah, I'm going to have your signature.
I'm going to have to blow it up and put it up there and frame it for me.
You know, right away, I think of resume builder.
Yeah.
Add us the resume and add it in there. All right.
We'll make some initials for it.
Well, since Deb is so kindly voluntary for this position, I entertain the motion to designate Deborah Petty, or Debbie Petty, as authorize Google Analytics data contact for the town of Freetown's website and to authorize the town administrator, which is Deb Petty, to sign the user access form and waiver for this purpose.
Motion made.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Oh, thank you so much.
All right. We've already done agenda item ten. Moving on to item agenda, item agenda, agenda item number eleven. Discussion, vote whether to approve change order from Riverhawk Environmental for landfill post-closure monitoring. For those who are following along, we have been in contact with Riverhawk for the past several months regarding different testing and monitoring of the landfill on Howland Road. This change order is for the tune of, I'm assuming this figure is correct?
Yes.
Thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. Am I correct on that? It seems like I am.
Yes.
Fantastic.
All to do with groundwater and surface monitoring.
Correct.
Drinking water.
We should keep making sure our water is safe and protected as much as possible for those paying attention at home and here, of course, in the audience. DEP in the state of Massachusetts, they, they have requirements, and we're doing everything we can to meet those requirements for anything from groundwater to any type of water for PFAS filtrations... to meet those requirements for anything from groundwater to any type of water for PFAS, filtrations, you name it, we're making sure that happens. All right, any concerns, questions for anything on this one?
No, absolutely not.
This one's pretty straightforward. All right, I entertain the motion, where am I, there it is. I attend the motion to approve the change order from Riverhawk Environmental for landfill post closure monitoring.
Motion made.
I second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving on along to agenda item twelve, discussion vote on which selectmen will participate in the selection process for design services for the South Main Street Bridge Preservation Project. All right.
Here we are.
Here we are. You know, this is the same one that Congressman Alkin Claus, right? Provided about a half a million dollars to the cause to, he came down here and he met with the, at first at the Council of Aging, then we all took a field trip down to the, to the bridge to discuss how important it is to the Town of Freetown maintaining its historic properties, but at the same time, meeting state regulations for being a state, a state road, Route seventy-nine, right? So the conversation at the time was, we needed money, still do, but he was kind enough to put it into, into the coffers and, and took out five hundred thousand dollars. Then furthermore, as we move forward with the project, it is now part of the Mass D O T.
Yeah.
All right, Mass D O T took it on. That's as much as I know at this point. What did I miss?
So that's where we're at, right? We've got it, we get it on the Mass D O T tip program through Serpent and Alkin Claus has funded the five hundred thousand dollars. If you remember, I don't remember what town meeting, but they, we voted to have the match appropriated, so there's a hundred grand that the town has also appropriated. So now we're at a point where we need to design the preservation of the South Main Street Bridge. Very daunting task, as you can imagine, so many things have to be, go into that project. So we're just trying to pick an engineer. So I've picked the players that make the most sense. We've got somebody from Historic because it's a historical bridge. We have a resident who's, who's very helpful and knowledgeable, Jim Rizendis, who's been involved in all the other bridge projects. Myself, Nancy has the planner, and we're looking for a selectman that wants to be involved. And just, it's just a matter of reading through and listening to the interviews of the engineer and determining who would be the best for the job at this point. So that's all, we're just looking to see. I think we vote Trevor because he's not here.
I was gonna say, we can just vote him in, we can't say no to it, right?
So, so I'm ecstatic at the group of people that are involved, including Mr. Rizendis and, you know, yourself and everything, so that, obviously, I knew you were involved, I knew Nancy was involved, but there's a couple other people that you mentioned that makes me feel like we have, regardless of whatever one of us gets involved, it's like, that's a good group of people, so.
Yeah, we got Chuck, I mean, obviously Chuck's a heavy hitter in this one. So I, I, I do think we have a good core, it's just still like the selectmen always drive the bus on a lot of this stuff too.
And it's a, it's going to be a very well-publicized, shall we say, project, right? Because it's right through the heart of town, so to speak, so it's going to put, it, it, there's gonna be a lot of added pressures because of that.
Oh, definitely, well, because at some point we have to close the road, right? And that's difficult, but I don't want, we're not there. We're just designing, we are nowhere near putting this out to bid and doing construction. That's, that's a whole nother phase, so.
But knowledge is key, right? And, and starting the, the conversations early and often, right? We, as we say all the time, matters because it will affect a lot of people's just general day to day.
I think, I think from the last police survey, I think it was about forty-six thousand vehicles per week that was on the radar from the, that was sitting there on Thirteenth South Main.
Please don't hold that.
No, 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 possibly about forty-six, fifty thousand vehicles.
I wanna tell you, there's about, I, we had a study down there, there's about eleven thousand vehicles a day.
Yeah.
So that's more than forty-six thousand a week, so maybe the weekends there's less, so that might tie in.
Still, yeah.
But Serpent did one a couple years ago when we were doing the Four Corners work that we're doing, and they did a traffic study and there was eleven thousand vehicles a day that go through the Four Corners, so they gotta go over the bridge, you know what I mean?
I wonder how long that would take, because here's my silly question of the day is, does it, and it might not be plausible, but doing something with the intersection at the same time that they're doing stuff with the bridge, because.
It's gonna be closed, right?
Yeah, the road's gonna be closed, so.
Right, well, you know that we, we have put in for a complete streets grant to work on the Four Corners, right? We're, we're moving forward on the Four Corners, you're gonna see us having some public information sessions coming forward in September-ish, I think, I'm not sure when they're exactly there. We're meeting with the abutters in August, the immediate abutters, so I'll also mention the bridge project to them. So you're gonna see them kind of come together. I don't believe, based on M B T A communities, that we're gonna get the grant that we apply for, for the Four Corners. That being said, we've applied for another grant for the Four Corners recently, so we'll see if that will at least get us through the design phase, the pay for the engineering. But if at all, I'm, I'm well aware, and Nancy and I are well aware, of trying to marry these projects, if at all possible.
Yeah, no, I mean, it makes sense on paper, but it, it's a lot easier, it's easy for me to sit back here and say that, right? But whether or not that would happen is.
Right, but we, I mean, that, in the perfect world, we would definitely do that. There's gonna be a lot of moving parts, especially the bridge.
It's a tricky area.
It's tricky, and then, you know, it's the funding, right? We, even if we got this grant for complete streets, I don't know that it would be ample funding to do the project, so it may not go forward anyways, it just depends on everything, it depends on, whereas I believe the bridge is pretty much funded. So we're moving, we're moving.
So the big question, do we just appoint Trevor and see what happens? Well, if it's me and you, we can't do any voting today, so I think we can safely pump this to the next meeting.
Do you know when we have that meeting?
Unless you want it now, we could just try the agenda for next time.
It doesn't matter, we'll just wait.
Okay. And for the engineer?
Yeah.
So, so we're gonna, we're gonna be having the meeting on August nineteenth at ten a.m. We do have a selectmen's meeting on the eighteenth. So if either of you were interested, just keep that in mind, that I think doing it during the day, because all the, the people that are involved are probably more available during the day. So again, I, I feel confident that we have a good team in place anyway, but obviously would love to have the selectmen involved in the process.
No, I, I a hundred percent agree with you, I think one of us should be involved and, but, yeah.
All right, we'll just, we'll kick it off to the next, to the next meeting.
Where it's not an official committee to appoint to, do they have to vote or can they just say, who wants to do it? It's not really a committee to appoint to.
Yeah, we don't really, we didn't really pull together an official committee for the bridge.
Okay, well.
We'll work on it.
Yeah, we'll work on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
If a selectman for some reason were to miss one of the meeting, well, actually, no, you can't miss it because it's just that one, yeah, all right, nevermind, I'm just thinking a lot, but yeah.
Yeah, then we can't solve it at the next meeting, since like, sounds like we have time.
Yeah.
Good core behind this, so we'll, we'll make, we'll make it work. Moving along, we'll skip that for tonight.
You want me to?
And pass it to the next one, and I'll kick off personnel board, Suckin' Zagger.
All right, agenda item number thirteen, discussion vote whether to start Melissa Frappier at step two on the wage scale based on experience. So obviously very well aware, Ms. Frappier's coming back to the town, has experience, and based on her experience with the town and away from the town, it only makes sense to start her at a higher scale than a step one.
Correct.
So, this is as no-brainer as it comes, but, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't have any issues or concerns.
No, no, not at all. Like you said, she was here in that same office when she first started with the Melissa World. She went and got, gathered more experience from another municipality, and now she's come back to us to be close to home, and this is a nice step forward for both the town and for her.
Absolutely, all right. So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve, to, wow. I entertain a motion to start Melissa Frappier on step two on the wage scale based on experience.
I make that motion?
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, and we continue. For the purpose of this meeting, we're gonna be entering executive session and not returning back from executive session and leaving open session.
Excuse me, selectman.
Yes.
I think we have a resident here for public input.
Oh, thank you, sorry about that. Before we go to executive session, it is time for the public input portion of our day. If you could state your name and what part of town you live and take it from there.
Sure, I hope I'm welcome in this room, but my name is Kimberly Levitt and I live in Lakeville, actually.
Oh, hi, Kimberly.
Hi, so thank you for having me at your meeting.
Sure.
You're still welcome in this room.
Thank you, I know, I feel okay.
What can we do for you, Kimberly?
Getting the secret sauce here. Well, Deborah and I had a conversation on Friday, but I think you all are aware, but our jet skis were stolen off of Long Pond a couple of weeks ago. So she did let me know that it came up at a meeting and that y'all were entertaining some sort of, you know, at some point surveillance or cameras or whatever at the boat, but, so I'm here to make sure that y'all know that there's a face behind that and it needs to happen, and I can see how there's lack of money or time or lack of quorum and pretty soon it'll be fall and won't be top of mind, and then it'll be winter and it will be nowhere on anyone's agenda, and before you know it, we'll be back at spring.
Well, Deborah, you're so far correct, we definitely discussed surveillance over at the boat ramp. As you've known, as all you can see as an avid boat jet skier, you know there's been some significant upgrades over the past couple of years, right? So from the shed to the striping, to the gate, to everything that's going on, someday, the new ramp, someday, right? But surveillance is definitely one of those things there and at the, at the town beach, so. And of course, Chief Rose is here, he can speak more to that, but it's one of those areas that it's, it's far away enough from town that enough stuff's going on that having a second set of eyes is always important.
Yeah.
It's, and, and sorry, Suckin' Wolves, I don't mean to talk over you. You know, that, that's been an interesting one because it's actually run by the town, but not, I don't know how much you're aware, so you probably already know this, but it's actually owned by the state and managed by the town, so.
I'm a little aware of that because it brings a lot of finger pointing and inability and red tape for anybody to do anything.
Yeah.
For the complicated by the fact that two-thirds or whatever, three-quarters of the pond is in Lakeville, too.
And it's the only real public access to the pond, right? So there is, and I'm not trying to point fingers or make excuses or anything, I'm just saying.
And don't take that personally, I was just saying.
No, 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 I know, I know, no, I'm, trust me. I'm, I'm not taking that way, trust me. So we, we recently, or I say recently, it's probably been two years now, we went back to the state because we, we had a lot of visions of different things we wanted to do there to improve it for residents as well as out-of-town residents, out-of-town people, and they allowed us to increase the fees that we were charging, but still to a very miniscule amount, if you ask me, right? And they said, oh, well, you guys are already like well out of the realm of what we're charging at basically every other public boat ramp. So we, we're not allowed to change much. So I know you don't wanna hear this, but you know, there was always a financial screen of what we can do there, right? We have to think about our taxpayers as part of this equation. With that being said, unfortunately, I think it's bad timing because we did talk about putting cameras down there, right? This has been happening at the unfortunate time that your, your jet skis were stolen, which, you know, made very well aware of by, you know, several individuals, so I'm truly sorry to hear that and I truly, truly hope that whoever took them gets caught, so. I, you know, I think one of our issues really has been what we had talked about at our last meeting. I'm not sure if you heard what we talked about, but it was really about how do we get the cameras in there, right? The easiest way, whether it be through a neighbor's internet, because we don't have internet power down and we don't have internet access down there, whether we do it remotely, right? So there was some different stuff that we had asked our office to try and research and then bring back to us. And then hopefully we can make a decision and I'm gonna promise you that as I sit here in front of you, I will not let it fall away, okay? Because park, I, that's my normal, we're, we're a little bit off kilter today because the normal chair of our board isn't here, but normally I'm the, the parks and rec guy, and so that, that's really kind of what, if something comes up with that, it's usually falling under me. So I'm gonna tell you that, I know, I'll never make a promise I can't keep, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna do my best for us to see it through, as, as will they, right? So.
Keep an eye on for you.
You know, I, I really do want you to know that, that, because it's, that's unfortunate and I can't say it enough, but I hope they get caught.
Now, for curiosity, for the, those at home, who ended up taking the report? Was it our, was it ours? Was it a Lakeville?
No, because we live in, like, had I known or thought about it differently, maybe I would've made a different choice, but I live in Lakeville, so who did I call? Lakeville Police, so, yeah.
Chief Rose, while I have your hair.
I don't know if that was a bad thing, I don't know, like.
A town, that's who you would report to, right? That's only makes sense.
But, but if that's something that like everyone should know from now on, if there's a theft reported, like, I don't, I don't know what the pros and cons of it would be, but.
Yeah, I would say that it would be to your town, because how would you know that Freetown had anything to do with it? Because we don't really have anything to do with it other than if they went through the boat ramp to, to access to get your jet skis, right? What if they did it through?
A private, yeah, there's a couple private ones.
He's a property in Lakeville, then that would have nothing to do with Freetown, right?
Okay, okay, so it doesn't matter.
Chief Rose, for the future, where, where should we direct residents to? Or out-of-towners, should be any signs saying who to call or?
So whenever someone's a victim of a crime, they should always start with their local law enforcement, right? So if you're, you know, a Lakeville resident, you contact your local, local police department and they'll give you guidance too, so, but not all calls that come into our department fall within our jurisdictions. Sometimes we have restraining order violations that are resident in our town, but the violation of the restraining order is in another community. So at that point, we would redirect them to that community where that violation took place. However, we still provide a service no matter, you know, where the, the crime took place and we, you know, advise the residents of such.
All right, would we benefit putting a sign up? I know there's a lot of signs there already, and I don't wanna bombard anybody with more signs, however, does it make sense to either remove some signs that are currently there now and add that sign, say in case of emergency theft or, I know, nine-one-one is always an option, right? It's probably the best option, unless it's not an emergency.
I'm not sure how.
If it's a theft, it's technically an emergency, right? Would you consider if someone found out that their jet skis were stolen that they should be calling nine-one-one?
Well, obviously, I mean.
Sorry.
Yeah, kinda putting me on the spot, a theft, obviously for any type of emergency, we're gonna tell you to dial nine-one-one. So let's say the theft took place two days ago, is it a dire emergency? The answer is no, right? But to get the information that you seek, you always wanna start with your local law enforcement.
Yeah.
Now, regarding the boat ramp, I mean, the agreement that the town signed with the state was back in nineteen ninety-four. We've been managing that property since then. I think, unless you're new to the area and you're not aware, that we're there on a regular basis patrolling the area, and then the, the Lakeville-Freetown town line is approximately, probably about a half mile up the roadway with a big giant sign that says Freetown on one side and Lakeville on the other. And I'm not minimizing the situation, but there's a lot of, as a matter of fact, the board that's there, I think there's actually has something on there that says Freetown as well. But more signage is always good, if you, you want, place another sign.
Well, there's a lot, there's a lot there now, right? It's like, I look at it as like your control center, all right? There's only so many monitors you can see at one time, right? Before you kind of get tunnel vision, and what I don't want is confuse more people by adding additional sign. I know there's some there that we wanna remove, so maybe it's a good opportunity to kind of mix and match and update them a little and refresh them.
I will say this, just to add about the video surveillance, I'm all for it. I mean, any type of video evidence for law enforcement is worth so much more than an officer writing a report. Proof is in the pudding, you see the video, you can get those detailed information, just supports our evidentiary complaints that go to court. So that would definitely benefit us if we could have that video surveillance.
Yeah, I mean, we, it was, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself, not the board, but as a board, we did, you know, there was, we were all very, in very much so in agreeance of that we should have cameras there, right? To, to aid and protect the town, our first responders, the residents, whether, you know, anyone, so.
Yeah.
It was just about how we do it i- in the best manner, so that way we didn't put something in place that didn't work and, you know, so.
Is there a way we can use the PEC funds for, for this type of surveillance or video?
I don't think so.
Okay, just food for thought. We'll, we'll get there, we'll find a way.
No, I believe you, I do, I, I appreciate that, and Mrs. Petty, or Ms. Petty, she spoke highly of you. She's like, no, my board is good, like, they will not drop it, I promise, so.
Well, that's because she'll keep us going. She'll kick us in the butt.
She controls our email, she's the Google Analytics data contact person. I got to use it day one. Fantastic.
Remembered it.
My last question to you out of curiosity, any, any leads, any promising leads?
Probably can't comment on that, but I, I mean, I hope they're caught too. I think the additional commentary, like, it's probably like lightning, right? Usually doesn't strike twice in the same place. But you never know because I think, you know, the, the people that do this are probably pretty good at it and, and do it whenever they can and sometimes maybe to taunt you. So I think, you know, we're probably lucky as a town that we have such low crime anyway. But like, this is just a reminder that like, we're not isolated or insulated from it. And there could be other things that go on at the boat ramp as well. Forget about theft of 2:00 AM, you know, what about, whatever? We don't need to talk about it, but there's a lot of things that could go on there. And, you know, I'm more than happy to be that squeaky wheel if there needs to be a constant weekly call to whoever it might be at the state. Because you brought up a good point. That sounds like not very good enough, but 30 years old, 32 years old agreement? Probably a lot has changed. Probably a lot could be rewritten in that contract. And, you know, if the state owns the property, like, where is their limit of liability? Or, or what should they be doing to help you? Because I think it's a fair point about the taxpayers, like, you didn't ask for this either. Like, you come manage it there. Like, come out of Beacon Hill and you come over here. Like, we don't want it. We don't want the expense. We don't want to play police details and things like that. So it's a fair point, like, who's gonna pay? Maybe the state should pay it, you know? Or the state should sell it and let you all manage it and charge what you want and track who comes in. And anytime you pull something off, you gotta prove that you own it. Dump it, put it in all you want. I'll take your $10 when you put it in. But if you're gonna pull it off, you need to prove that you own it. Maybe you can close the gate at night. Like, that just seems like mind-blowingly obvious to me where every other, and I'm just, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong. But a lot of other state land, parks, all this stuff closes at dusk. Cemeteries close at dusk. Why does this not close? Why? Nonsensical to me.
Great question.
Because at the middle of the night, now it's my backyard, right? So now, like, everyone has access, but during the day, everyone can fish, everyone can enjoy nature. That's all fine. But after that, who had the duty of care to make sure people couldn't come to my backyard? See, same kind of dichotomy, like, I, I gotta build this MBTA thing, but then there's a rail abutting it. Like, it's not my fault that there's a pond abutting my property, kinda. And now people have access by way of a town-owned boat ramp of the state or the state, yeah, but you know what I mean?
I don't technically understand that.
It's just, it's super frustrating. And, you know, I am kind of new to the, to that whole thing. Like, I'm from Ohio originally, not from here. I've lived in Lakeville for a bit, but only been on the pond since 2020. So I'm not like third-generation pond, like, kind of knows all the politics and all that. Like, I really don't know. I did get involved with, we talked about it too, with Deborah, the whole weed situation and who's gonna deal what. Like, I was in support of, like, I live on the pond. I understand my property values are tied to that. So I was all in, in favor of that. And I don't know, I, I can't even comprehend why we opened up a vote to the entire town of Lakeville when only the people on the pond were gonna pay the tax, like, we were willing to pay the tax. Like, that baffles me. Why would, why didn't we let people in Arkansas vote? Like, it made no sense. Why you would let somebody who was not impacted by the law have a say in it when we were trying to do the right thing for the pond, for the next generation? So anyway, I understand all of the frustration and the whole, everybody has a little bit of ownership and a little bit of say, but no responsibility, no authority. So if, if there's anything I can do from being just a citizen, then happy, happy to take on that role too. So let me know.
Ms. Lovett, thanks for being here, for letting us, giving your information and giving us the, the face view of the, of the, of the issue at hand. No, we'll, we'll do everything we can. And I understand your frustrations with the pond. We've grown to know a lot about it. The acreages of the pond, had the state take over, I have, I have a feeling a lot of people would be happy, maybe some over at Town Hall especially. Because it'd be, it is quite a bit at times to take it on. But it's people like you that come in, that come in here and let us know what your two cents are, that gives us our, our drive. So thank you for that.
But it's not fair to you too. Like, I'm sure you guys didn't ask to have this, this burden put on you and then out of your.
We got elected, so it's part of the, part of the job.
Well, I, I, yeah, you, yes. And I didn't mean you, but like, the town, like, why is it the town's problem to solve the state's thing? Like, they're an absentee landlord. Rewrite that lease, rewrite that contract. And let me know if I can help write grants or whatever the case may be to, to get more funding. Because seemingly, and I'm sure it's more complicated than it, than I'll make it sound, but like, you can get internet for $99 a month somehow. So like, it doesn't seem like it would, it would take a big line on a budget. But I guess there's storage and then there's who's gonna maintain it and who's gonna view it.
Request.
Yeah, so then there's public records requests and stuff.
It does no bother, I'm sure.
You know, cringing over there hearing that, right? Because public records request is a huge deal in this department. And, you know, so there's all that. So then to
And as soon as there's a camera, everyone will be.
The record somewhere, so we can't just let it erase off after a couple of days and.
Right. Okay. Good point, yeah.
So it's, there's a lot of other pieces to it, right? Than it seems on surface. But regardless, rather than myself continuing to talk in circles, I will tell you that I, you know, I, I know as a board that we will take care of it and do right by it for you as well as other residents and people.
Maybe ask Lakeville for some help too. Maybe they'll kick into the budget. I don't know. Because again, it's three-quarters of it's on Lakeville. So I don't know. But I'll leave all of that who pays to you guys.
And so, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll close with that. We have built a good working relationship with Lakeville. So as we continue our talks at other matters, we'll, we'll feather this in and, and let them know
Okay.
that a constituent of theirs came in and, and let them know what's going on so that they're aware of it as well, so that maybe there is a mutual way forward in the future.
Yeah. Maybe I could make a guest appearance over there too and tell them like, hey.
Tell them we said hello.
Like, we have a, was it a vested interest in you playing nicely and helping Freetown because we all benefit if we work together. But, you know, because nobody cares until it happens to them. So I guess I'm, I'm the face of that now, like now.
Exactly.
So, yeah, let me know again how I can help. And I appreciate you taking the time and.
Of course.
Appreciate you staying here and listening to us blab on for the past couple of hours, so.
I think I wanted to ask the MBTA guy something, but I was like, it's probably not my place.
Well, we'll probably post the answer to it, so.
Let us know. You, you have Deb's contact. We'll be more happy to answer any questions we have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. I hope you have a great night.
All right. All right. Moving on with our, our agenda, we have some signatures. Once we sign away, we'll read the executive sessions and then close out the public agenda and, and enter executive session. And then now return back from executive session and go home.
You said you're not gonna return to open session, right?
Correct. Not gonna return back to open session. People have had enough listening to me today. All right. I will read the executive session minutes and then close out the open meeting that we're having. All right. So returning back to executive session, I have agenda three, MGLC 30A, section 21A7. Comply with or act under the authority of any general, special law or federal grant and aid requirement specifically GLC 30A, section 22. For the purpose of reviewing executive session minutes for approval and determining whether such minutes shall be released in the matter of approval. Not release of executive session minutes from 7/28/2025. I have agenda four, MGLC 30A, section 21A3. To discuss strategy with the following collective bargaining with the Freetown Police Association because an open meeting may be detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body. The chair so declares as I do. All right. That said, for the purpose of this meeting, I entertain the motion to end open session and go into executive session and now returning back to executive session for today.
A motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. All right.
Now, executive session.
Executive session has begun.